On the
Sorry.
Litigating position of the public body and the Chair so declares Kay Reed versus the Town of Concord. The Select Board will convene an open session immediately after the adjournment of executive session.
Second. Okay, and as Chair, I declare that open session would have a detrimental effect. So, all in favor?
We need to do a roll call.
Roll call, right. Okay.
So, Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, thank you. We are in executive session. Think so. All right. Thank you. We are back in open session. So, the first thing we have is the consent agenda.
So, move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of September 27th, 2021, two Eagle Scout letters commemorating their Eagle Scout status, gift acceptance from the Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball of the donation of a backstop padding and carpet for right outfield valued at $9,000, and also an approval of a request from the Concord Recreation Commission for field lining to establish outfield boundaries where the fence would normally exist if one were to be built, and one will not be built at this point, and that Concord Public Works will do the field lining. And then a request from the Colonial Inn to extend alcohol serving hours on Easter Sunday to start at 10:00 a.m., and then a number of one-day liquor licenses for the Concord Museum annual gala, the Concord Museum golf tournament at the Concord Country Club, and for the Concord Country Club, 22 sessions over the course of this year.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you to the Boy Scouts. Great job.
And thanks to the Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball for those backstops and the carpeting, which, by the way, is not the same thing, as I've been educated, as artificial turf.
They make a point of it.
Because it doesn't have crumb rubber in between. It's literally just the carpet.
All right. Good to know. Thank you. Next, we will go to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, and good evening. April, the week of April 10th is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. While we neglected to put together a proclamation, I just wanted to give a big thanks to our public safety dispatchers who work hard each day to keep the public and our public safety personnel safe. There's some information in the report about the opioid settlement, and you may have seen that the Town of Concord has been allocated $368,000 from the settlement to be used for programs, local programs, to help opioid addiction. There's information in the packet, both for the police and fire logs. I did want to mention that our fire prevention staff conducted fire drills at the public schools this past week. Some information about Public Works, the pavement marking, I believe I mentioned that last week. We will have the road, the parade route striped in time for the parade. We have work at the Stowe Street parking lot, which is scheduled for later this spring. Right-of-way and driveway permitting, as of April 1st, our engineering staff is accepting reviewing and issuing right-of-way and driveway permit applications. A note in the report about the Safe Routes to School grant, unfortunately, we were not awarded a grant. Hopefully, we will have an opportunity to reapply for that project and other projects in the future. I mentioned last week that the compost facility opened on April 2nd. It will be open Saturdays and Wednesdays, on Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Wednesdays, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. into the fall. We have started our athletic field and open space maintenance. Our visitor center opened this past Friday, and there were nearly 200 people that stopped in over the weekend. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Subcommittee met to review seven different conceptual options to improve safety at Junction Park and the rail trail. The West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee met last week, and they received an update on the industrial mural project, and also started planning for Porch Fest, which will be September 24th. See, our Health Division is working on a guide for opening food establishments. They presented that to the Economic Vitality Committee. One of the things we're hearing from the business community is the difficulty that businesses have in obtaining information about opening or expanding businesses in town. So, we've tried a number of efforts to try to bridge that gap, so it's easier to do business in Concord. I also want to announce that we have a new Health Director. Melanie Deneen is our new Health Director, and she will be starting on Monday, April 25th. Melanie has a, let's see, a Bachelor of Science in Food Science from Cornell University, and a Master of Science in Food Science from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and a long list of professional certifications. She has served in many different positions in both private and public sector over the years, most recently as the Grant Coordinator for the Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition. She views herself as a collaborative leader for public health initiatives within the municipal government municipal government sphere and working with the public. I know one of the things that impressed the interview committees about Melanie was her customer service philosophy, and that she was very interested in being proactive and in being more responsive to all constituents. So, that is something that, not to say that we weren't in the past, but that was something that really stood out to all of the people that interviewed Melanie on two different panels.
Could I, Carrie, could I ask a question about that process? Was the panels that did the search and interview, did that include Board of Health members, or was it just town staff?
So, it was a combination. The Chair of the Board of Health sat in, at least on the first interview panel. I'm not sure if she sat in on both, but we had staff from multiple divisions that participated as well.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much for that report.
Actually, I did have one more question, which is, it appears that opioid settlement would be around 25,000 a year for the first nine years and about 15,000 afterwards. Is that a rough idea?
I believe that is roughly accurate.
Yeah, and so, do we, we don't have specific plans yet for that. That'll just roll into the Health Department budget, but I would hope it would be related to those kinds of programs, you know, in the town, right? I mean, trying to improve our situation relative to substance abuse, maybe not specifically necessarily opioids, but all, you know, kinds of public health-related there. I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so, we don't have any specific plans yet. We did just learn about this last week. But the money is set aside for public health initiatives related to addiction treatment.
Addiction treatment, so, but any kind of addiction, I guess.
Does Narcan that the police carry with them, is that part of their budget, or is that come out of the Health Department budget, or what pays for the drug treatment materials that the public safety people carry?
So, currently, that is within the public safety budgets.
Well, that might be a good application for these funds.
We certainly could look at that to see if that is eligible, or if we need to be looking at programs that treat addiction versus just the emergent, emergency need to use Narcan.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. I'd like to ask the Zoom Administrator if we could be on gallery view, because we're, thank you. We're going to have a lot of participation in a few minutes. Just very briefly, the Chair's remarks. Tomorrow is Election Day. Please remember to vote. May 1st is our town meeting at 1:00 p.m. at the high school. A lot of events are scheduled for Patriots' Day, starting with the parade at 9:00 a.m. Actually, that's Monday, April 18th, but the event starts, they go Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday with the dawn salute, and you can get the whole list on the website. I found it today. You go into Visitors, and then click on Events, and it'll give you all of the events. There's quite a few of them. So, it's exciting. We have good weather. We're ready to get back to our new normal. And our next Select Board meeting will be April 25th. We are now ready for a public hearing, a petition by National Grid.
Linda, you have a question? Yeah, I have a question about your report. In the past, the Select Board has been invited by the Public Ceremonies Committee to march in the parade as a group, and we haven't heard anything. Do you know anything about that? Henry, I know that's your committee.
No, I was, actually, I was, didn't get around to asking the, because of a question I got from a resident, to not only ask the committee to present us with the list of participants in the parade, but also the order of march, which is something they, you know, traditionally produce in great detail. And I will ask, I will ask tomorrow, if we can, my assumption is, since we got those red, white, and blue sashes, that we're going to march at the head of the parade, whether or not they want us to.
I'm sure they want us to. Who wouldn't want us, right?
Along with our honored citizens.
Yes.
Anonymous still.
That's right.
Truly anonymous.
Does that answer your question, Linda?
Does that mean somebody with a bag on their head?
Nope. No, that's, those are different people.
Okay. You'll inquire and send out, or have Robbins send out and notice all of us?
Or ask them to send, send that information to the whole board.
Okay.
And the whole mailing list.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to have a public hearing regarding National Grid petition on Commonwealth Avenue. Do we have?
So, a move to open the public hearing on the petition for a grant of location filed by National Grid for gas mains located at 75 to 135 Commonwealth Avenue.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, do we have Mary Mulroney or someone else from National Grid?
Yes, good evening. How are you?
Good. Go ahead, Mary.
National Grid respectfully requests your consent to transfer all services from the 4-inch coated steel gas main to the, into the 8-inch coated steel in Commonwealth Ave from Lorsbrook Road to 74 Commonwealth Ave before the railroad track, tie in 4-inch coated steel gas main to 8-inch coated steel in the intersection of Lorsbrook Road and Commonwealth Ave with approximately 20 feet of 4-inch plastic, tie in 4-inch coated steel gas main to 8-inch coated steel at 74 Commonwealth Avenue with approximately 5 feet of 4-inch plastic, and abandon 850 feet of 4-inch coated steel gas main in Commonwealth Ave from Lorsbrook Road to 74 Commonwealth Ave before the railroad track, to tie in 2-inch coated steel gas main to 8-inch coated steel in the intersection of Commonwealth Ave in Bradford Street with approximately 30 feet of 2-inch, tie in 2-inch coated steel gas main to 8-inch coated steel in the intersection of Comm Ave and Beharl Street with approximately 60 feet of 2-inch. And it's due to Concord's road reclamation. They're doing their roads over, and we want to go in ahead of time and get the work done, so we would never have to come back.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. It says that the work will be done by April 22nd. That is coming right up. Are you confident the work will be finished by then?
Justin.
So, CBW would like to revise that condition, because it's a little unrealistic of a date. We would like the grant of location approved with a revision, that date of May 27th, if that's acceptable to National Grid.
Wow. So, I guess the concern is that there is an event planned in West Concord, spring into West Concord Junction Day, May 21st. So, you know, if everything's all torn up, and sidewalks you can't cross, that would be very inconvenient, to say the least. And in fact, I've raised this before, previously, with, about the paving, you know, and making sure that that does not conflict with the event. There also, I know, will be a grand opening that's planned for, you know, the new Deborah's Natural Gourmet site between now and then. I mean, I realize there's never a convenient time to do this work, but, you know, given that there is a community event planned, at least on May 21st, I just wonder, is there any way to work around that?
Yeah, maybe if we could move it up one week and have it completed.
Well, maybe a little bit of safety.
Right, with a little safety. Do you think National Grid would have enough time to complete it by, say, the 15th of May?
And starting when?
Well, when I read the April 22nd date, I thought you'd show up at the hearing with shovels in hand, but I don't know how realistic, what the realistic date to start would be, and whether there are any constraints from our Public Works.
Justin, do you, are you okay if they start tomorrow, if they could?
So, they would need to file for a right-of-way permit. We can expedite through our engineering team. As, you know, as soon as National Grid applies for it, we could try to get it issued within a few days, and then they would be free to basically start their work. I don't want to speak for National Grid on their scheduling, you know, for contractors to come in and do the work, or if they're going to do it themselves. Mary, I'll defer to you on that.
I agree with you. I mean, I can bring this forth and explain that you're having a town party on May 21st, and that, obviously, I agree, you don't want your streets ripped up and, you know, equipment there and so forth. But I, I don't know if, if limiting it from like, so, say, April, by the time we get a permit, April 22nd to May 15th would be, like, if it rains, it's an unsafe condition, and National Grid can't.
So, is it possible instead to just wait until after May 21st?
Right. Do you want?
Or is that going to complicate things for the paving?
So, that's our issue, is we have a full, complete streets project going on in there, in that section, and we need, have a deadline for the funding of September 30th, 2022. So, we need, and we need National Grid to go in there prior to the, us doing any of our work, essentially. We can try, so, if this would be acceptable, we can try to condition the permit, basically, in our right-of-way permit, which we can have National Grid not work that, you know, basically, that weekend, and have all trenches closed up, and, you know, vehicles off the road, that type of thing, that weekend, if that's acceptable to National Grid, and then, you know, they're, you know, obviously, they have to put patching down, you know, throughout their construction. The sidewalks would, I assume, they're going to, you know, use asphalt to pave them, because we're going to be ripping them up as part of our complete streets project. But we could condition our right-of-way permit to have basically no, you know, all trenches closed up and all National Grid vehicles essentially off the road for that weekend.
How do people feel about that?
Linda? You know, you still have a pretty rough condition left.
Yeah, but, I mean, I don't know what other options we have. I mean, the only other thing I could say is, well, you know, you could, you know, given the amount of time to get the contractors and the permits in hand and everything, I just wonder if, if we said, well, you could start May 22nd, would that be enough time to finish everything by September 30th? You know, but I don't know that. I just, it just seemed like, wow, that would be a a nice option if there was enough time. And again, I don't know what constraints there are, but other than that, I guess the best we can do is just at least have things cleared away for that weekend, or ideally, the work done by then.
Yeah, I mean, we could say our strong preference is to have the work finished by then, but in the event that it's not, that all the trenches be closed up and everything, you know, just in case it rains, then it would give you that out. So, I guess at this point, Justin and Mary, do you need to talk some more? Or do you, it seems like we should try to nail this down tonight, if we can, but if you need more time to talk amongst yourselves, we can do it that way, too.
Do we know how many workdays it will take to do the installation of the gas mains?
Good question.
And does that mean working nights and weekends? Or how is the, in other words, how much time do you need between now and when you're done doing the work and close up the holes in the ground?
Mary, do you know that?
I'm not, I'm not exactly 100% sure, but it's going to take a good few weeks, anyway, to do this with, with the tying over, to get into the new, the new services being tied over, then. And then again, if it does rain, I, I don't know, me, I'm just throwing this out here, Justin. Maybe if we got to work on the permit now, and then we got the permit all set to go for May 16th?
No, no, May 22nd.
Oh, May 20, I'm sorry, May 22nd, and then it would allow scheduling for the grid to proceed, and then we would get in there, and obviously, once we start it, we don't go, we don't leave it. So, you know that it would be finished well before September. So, I don't know.
So, we still have a whole, it's not the September date that, so, we have to start all our work, which is going to be, we're reclaiming that entire section, repaving, reconstructing all the sidewalks, curbing, parking, so our, our project is going to take months to complete, which is why
Okay.
Trying to get you guys in ahead of time, so that we have time to finish
Okay, perfect.
All the stuff we need to do.
So, then, if we went in now, you would be well aware that we're applying for the city right-of-way permit with probably tomorrow, and then if we got in, they only do sections, anyway, so as it came closer to May 22nd, they could lock it down, tidy up, and make it appear as safe and as nice as it can be, and then when the, when your function is over, then go back in the following weekend? I mean, weekday. Because, oh, someone asked about nights. That, that's driven by the Town of Concord and the DPW. They decide what hours we are allowed to work with that permit. That's not us.
And I have a question related to that, which is, has the Chief or the Public Safety Officer approved your traffic plan?
So, I'll answer that. They, they are typically not requested to do the traffic management plan until they apply for their right-of-way permit, and that, as soon as they apply, then we send it to these department for their review with our review. So, they haven't submitted it yet, but they're, technically, they, you know, they're not responsible to do that yet, until they apply for their right-of-way permit.
Since you said that they were going to do the work in sections, I wonder whether there could be some consultation on the sequencing of those sections, so that it would have the minimization, the job ran over.
Well, I mean, that stretch is right in West Concord Center. I mean, it's from Kenny Dunn Square to the railroad tracks. It's all commercial. It, I don't know that there's a
Well, I think that, for instance, the stretch between the railroad tracks and the triangle would be the key area for any kind of civic function. Well, but there's some other, there's like going down Beharl Street, and there's going down Lorsbrook Road, and there's some other pieces that go different ways.
I mean, I think that it's just connecting at the very end at Lorsbrook Road where the triangle is. I don't think it's going very far.
Well, it sounds to me like getting the right-of-way and the traffic and everything is going to take a few weeks. So, maybe it's really only realistic to start May 22nd, anyway.
Well, they need to be finished by then, not start.
Well, again, I don't know how long.
I mean, as you said, a few weeks, which if you start in the middle of April, a few weeks could mean four weeks with any luck, and that gets you done by the middle of May, because the 22nd, that May date is when you have the West Concord activities.
Right, we're talking about starting right after that.
And immediately after that, Public Works has to start the paving work, so they get done by September. This is not, they can't start their, their gas work after the end of May and have the paving people have enough time to get the job done by September 30th.
Linda?
Justin, given the timeline concerns that you have for the department, for the work that the town needs to do, and for the constraints that Mary has outlined, can you make a proposal right now in terms of dates, given what you've heard from us and what your needs are?
For completion by National
For start and, yeah.
We would obviously like them to be done by the end of May, just because our, our, our project is basically out for bid right now. We're going to receive bids on May, sorry, March, April 22nd, and, and we will then proceed with issuing a contract to the, you know, the apparent low bidder. Then, as soon as that occurs, we'll get a schedule from them, and they'll, you know, start the work. We know that this job is going to take a while because of the complexity related to, you know, the traffic, the pedestrian activity in the area, that type of thing. So, we would prefer that they be completed by the end of May. We could try to push that to like the first week of June, but then we're, you know, it's starting to get a little, you know, risky, so, but, you know, I think we could, we could, you know, try that. I think as long as National Grid thinks they can, you know, be done in a few weeks, we could be okay, schedule-wise.
What that means is get going right away, get the work, the gas work done before May 27th, so we have our West Concord Festival, and then
20, 20.
21st.
The event's 21st.
21st, whatever that date is, the May 21st date, and then after that, we start, after the festival, we start the paving.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Would, Justin, do you think that we would be able this week to apply for the permit? I know that you're not going to allow anybody working on the marathon. So, and our permit could be good to go on April 19th? That's a Tuesday, and then it gives you 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5, almost 5 weeks of, of
So, I believe that, yes, we could get you, we could get, we could issue you your permit if you apply. your permit if you applied for it tomorrow on, on the 12th. We could issue it to you probably by Monday, the 18th.
Okay.
That's a holiday.
If your application was complete.
Yeah.
Nineteenth because of the holiday.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, the 19th. Correct.
Right.
Well, that sounds like a good plan. Okay.
I just had a question for Justin. This, I assume that this project is one of several that Public Works has planned during this paving season, which is from now till it gets cold. And I didn't know if there was other work on complete streets in that stretch that you would be doing simultaneously with the gas? Or does the gas have to be in and done before you can start any of the other work?
It, it does need to be in and done because the first process is to reclaim the street, which is essentially to, you mill down about 16 inches, recompact the, the material underneath that, and then we put a binder course on it. But to, to do that, National Grid would have already had to install their gas mains underneath that. Or they would essentially just be affecting our newly compacted roadway base.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, the only other one, completely different subject, is it, I was curious why you're going from a four inch to an eight inch pipe. I mean, that's four times the capacity. Just seems like a big increase. What is the rationale for that?
Mary?
Yes?
The connecting pipes are like four inches, right?
Yeah. Yes. We're just, just to eliminate the old pipe that's there, we're just tying on to the existing eight inch that's there and.
I see. So at one end, it's already eight inches.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like our plan is that tomorrow morning, you'll apply for the right-of-way. We'll try to get the permitting finished by the 19th. So we're ready to start right away. Now, if there are delays and that doesn't work out and you need to move all these timelines, let us know and we'll put you on our agenda for our meeting at the end of April. So any other questions? Okay. Ready for a motion?
I've moved to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Do we have any public comment?
Public comment? I do not see any. So.
Move to approve the petition. I don't know, is included in the board packet? Do we want to make any other comments? I mean, there was the date change. I think even there, it's.
Well, the date was April 22nd, so we're going to change it to May 19th or something like that.
Well, is that correct? I thought that we had talked about if the work is not completed, that they would close things up.
Shouldn't be that. She said they need a few weeks and they could do it.
Right. But, you know, just given the uncertainty, again, I'm trying to understand what, if we make a revision here, right, the, there is a revision that's been requested. Because as it stated, the thing says all work completed by April 22nd.
Right. So why don't you take a stab at?
Well, no, I'm just going to ask the.
Justin, maybe? About dates?
Yeah, the applicants, you know, about the, what is the date that we should be setting here on this application?
Well, I think what we decided was that it's got to be done by about the 18th or 19th of May. And if not, then they, then they have to close up all the trenches and make it as safe as possible. Is that what, for the weekend of, for the weekend event?
The project schedule, it says, Section 2, National Grid's project schedule, they must complete the work on or before April 22nd.
Right. We're changing that.
All right. So.
Make it May 19th.
I still don't think that that's correct.
That's been changed to May 27th, according to the date that.
Justin.
Okay. So Justin stated that. So, okay. So I would, so I'm going to revise this motion, withdraw and remake my motion to approve the petition as included in the board packet for this meeting, with the exception of the completion date of Section 2, that the all work must be completed by May 27th of 2022 and for the weekend of May 21st and 22nd, that all equipment needs to be removed and that all trenches and other things need to be filled in, in the area made accessible for participants in the Spring into West Concord Junction Day.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much, Mary and Justin.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Next, we have Jason Bolger, who was here a few weeks ago. And I hope everybody had a chance to watch the brief video that Jason did. I watched it today. It was excellent. And I now understand everything about 5G. No, but at least I understand some of it. It was a very good, if you haven't seen that 18-minute video, I really recommend it. So Jason, I yield the floor to you. Thank you for all your work.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you all for having me back to talk about this. I'm going to go through a little presentation to go over the draft policy that I have helped write. But before, you know, you mentioned the video. I know not everybody has seen the video, so I'll just mention what that is. So at the March 7th meeting, I had prepared a presentation, but we were a little short on time. So rather than spend those 18 minutes here tonight, I thought I would record that so that everybody could kind of watch it offline at their leisure. But it went through why the 5G rollout is different than 4G, why it requires more towers, antennas, et cetera. Also Concord's history with cellular towers and the bylaws that do apply today, and also the FCC rulings and Telecommunications Act laws that affect 5G and why the town really should do something. So I'm actually going to start sharing my screen with the last slide that was in that presentation. And just explain, you know, where this came from. Basically, many other municipalities in the state have adopted a policy on small wireless facilities. And KP Law and others have recommended that municipalities do adopt these to protect them a little bit and have more say in the guidelines and fees that they charge. The FCC is imposing very strict limits on what towns can do. So it's in Concord's interest to adopt a policy like this. And we also think that in terms of process, it's good to take this draft policy and get public input and also input from all of the senior managers and division managers in town that might have expertise in this area. So, and that being said, I'll also mention that we'll make sure that that, the link to the video is posted somewhere so that the public can see. I know it was distributed somehow, but I'm not quite sure. Everybody has had a chance to see it, but we'll work on making that available.
Thank you.
Yep. So I did include a policy or I sent a policy to Carrie and she did put it in the packet. And I'm just going to kind of walk through the highlights of that. So in this draft policy, the town manager's office oversees the process and the application. And the select board is the, the body that holds the public hearing on that. The application fee is $500 for up to five sites and $100 for each additional sites. These limits on fees were imposed by the FCC for their safe harbor limit. And you'll see later that we can actually charge more, but we have to be able to justify why we're charging more than the safe harbor limit. It asks for 10 hard copies and one electronic copy. And the town manager's office determines the application completeness within 10 days of receiving the application. So I'll just mention that this policy that's before you is adapted from the city of Medford, the town of Andover, and the town of Burlington. Those were all policies that we discussed the last meeting, and I took a look at those all very closely. And interestingly, they all share the same base policy. They are 95% plus similar or identical. And the key differences are really just the, the forms of government, whether it's town manager or town administrator or city versus town. The other thing is that the town of, or the city of Medford's policy did have a policy declaration in the beginning, which I think as we look to retool all of our policies, it's a good idea to explain to people why you have a policy. It helps ensure, or it helps people understand why you're, you're asking them to go through this process in particular. So we, I tried to take the elements that I thought were most applicable to the town of Concord from those policies. And, you know, one of the questions that I, I got was how, how does the town manager's office determine an application is complete and what exactly does that step look like? Basically, it's just making sure that, that the applicant has met the minimum requirements set on the policy. So sometimes designs are required and it's up to that office to, to ensure that all the, you know, specifications that are submitted are what we are asking for in the, in the policy. I will mention that the FCC instituted a shot clock for these reviews. We have 90 days for a new site and 60 days for a site that's in existence already and that's being modified. So we, we don't have a lot of time, which is why we need to act expeditiously when we receive these applications. If the town manager's office determines that the application is not complete, they will respond in writing to the applicant and let them know where they're deficient. That does reset the shot clock once we receive the, you know, the modified application. But the simple act of the review does not delay or stop the shot clock. So those 10 days are included in the 60 or 90 day shot clocks. Moving on from that, the town manager's office is going to then distribute that application to other departments and divisions, and they have 20 days to return comments to the town manager's office. We thought that since we have a light plant and that we're a little bit unique from some of the other municipalities that have these policies, we wanted to, you know, take care to call out the light plant in particular for a review because of their interest in maintaining the poles in town and also their ability, their unique ability to judge what poles can withstand in terms of attachments. After the comments have been received, the select board is asked to schedule a public hearing at which, at which point the application will be discussed. Butters will be notified at the applicant's expense. And any material changes as a result of those comments or questions does restart the process and the shot clock. So if in that 20-day period, some of those departments have questions and, and concerns that are related to the applicant, the applicant may decide to withdraw the application and modify it and resubmit it so that they have a better chance of succeeding. The policy then explains that the select board has three options. They can either grant, grant with conditions, or deny the application. Where the select board is within bounds of denying that application is when the application does not either contain the necessary proof that the, for instance, that the pole can withstand the requested attachment or that there are safety or reliability concerns, or it doesn't meet any other standards or design standards, they can deny that, that application. Some other limitations are that there are only one small cell facility per pole. And as I mentioned before, in terms of the fees, they are strictly regulated by the FCC, but they do say that municipalities can charge more than that amount as long as that fee is justified. So in a, in a particular area, that might be sensitive in terms of its historical character, there might be additional reviews that the town wants to take or, you know, third-party reviews for engineers. Those costs can be added on to the charge for the application as long as they're not unreasonable. In terms of what we're asking for, for the application itself, it's, it's just a few things, information about the applicant, detailed drawings and descriptions of the equipment that's going to be installed, any specifications of the equipment that's going to be installed, including how powerful it is, the frequencies, if it's hardened to the weather and the life, things like that. We're also asking for a detailed map showing existing and proposed small cell installations within 500 feet so that we have a good idea of, you know, other surrounding poles and, and facilities that might be there so that we can take those things into consideration. Some other requirements are obviously consent from the pole or structure owner. If they're going to be mounting this on a, on a building or a pole, they need to ensure that consent is given. The poles in town generally are co-owned by the light plant or the town and Verizon, so they would require consent from both parties. They would also provide explanation as to why this installation is needed. I'll mention that the town of Concord's bylaw relating to wireless facilities actually requires them to justify why it's needed. The FCC has stated that that's not, not something we can require an applicant to say to justify why they're doing it, but we can ask them to explain their gaps in coverage so that at least when we present that to the board and to the town, people are at least understanding of why they're trying to do it. They are required to carry insurance. We also are asking that they have made efforts and that they show their efforts to co-locate equipment. In other words, instead of littering every pole in a stretch with equipment, if they can consolidate things under a single shroud. I did mention that, you know, there's only one facility per pole, but that doesn't mean they can't put multiple antennas or equipment inside of a single shroud as long as it's all rolled up into a single installation.
Yeah. And actually, that wasn't clear to me at all. So I don't know if it's possible to clarify that in the policy.
Okay. That's a, that's a good.
Yeah, because those two statements did seem to be in opposition to one another, you know, and you're, you're explaining why they're not, but that wasn't clear to me.
Yep. Got it. Also, an affidavit saying that the application will keep the installation in good repair. We don't want, you know, decaying equipment if it's not being used anymore. And then also a bond to ensure that there are funds available to remove the equipment if it's decommissioned. So there's not blight existing on poles. There's a couple prohibitions that I'm going to go over. So for instance, there's no installation on double poles. Poles must meet sidewalk clearance requirements and standards, including ADA compliance. And they cannot be installed on traffic lights, streetlights, or roadway infrastructure. I'll just elaborate on this because some people are curious as to what these are. A double pole is simply a pole that has been replaced. And the double pole is the remnant of that, that usually retains the attachment of telecommunications like cable, phones, fiber. Usually poles are replaced for the electrical service first, and then it's up to the various carriers to relocate their equipment. Sometimes because this is not a moneymaker for them, they're not really interested in doing it quickly. And what the town doesn't want is to have this equipment installed on a pole that we know will eventually be removed. An example of an ADA non-compliant pole is this one here. So the pole obviously itself is not, we're not worried about ADA compliance to get to the pole. We're worried about ADA compliance for the pathway or right-of-way where the pole stands. And I think that the light plant doesn't have too many of these situations. But if we know that a pole is an obstacle to, to right-of-way and eventually may be moved, we don't want to see equipment installed on it that may be difficult or delay our ability to relocate that pole. If poles are painted, if we have metal poles, they're often painted, the equipment needs to be painted the same color or finished so that it matches. Exposed wires are not permitted. Any logos or company affiliations or identifying graphics need to be concealed. Sometimes there are required notifications or stickers that appear on things and it says that they need to be as small as, as legally allowed. And then in terms of height, we don't want to see poles that stick out, you know, dozens of feet higher than surrounding poles. So there is a height limit, either 32 feet or no more than 10% taller than adjacent poles, whichever is higher. Antennas need to be located entirely within a shroud or canister so that you don't see exposed gear. And they need to be located at the top of the pole and aligned with the center line of the support structure. And also there's some language in there about pruning of trees if they need to install equipment and it happens to be under a tree, that they need to get the tree warden to sign off on any pruning that's done before the installation. Just a couple examples of things that would be on the more compliance side. I want to, I don't want to judge any of these things in particular, but I'll just point out the things that are done right here. You'll see that the antenna itself is shrouded at the top of this utility pole. You'll also see that because they need to be a safe distance from the electrical, primary electrical lines, they did add a pole extension, which is fine and allowable in a policy like this. And then also the wires have been put into a conduit and are concealed. And it does, it is centered over the center line of that pole. An example of attachments of a facility that's not following these guidelines would be this. An example of attachments of a facility that's not following these guidelines would be this. You'll see a lot of exposed wires, you'll see equipment and antennas that are not in shrouds or canisters, and you'll see a lot of equipment that's off of the center line of the pole. This is really going to draw your eye to this, and you're going to see this equipment very quickly, whereas the previous design, your eye is not going to be drawn to it as much, and a casual observer might not even know what the what the thing is at the top of that. So that's most of what I wanted to cover in terms of the overview of the policy, and I wanted to mention that there are a few things that I am looking for input for from the community and the board on. The other communities mentioned what their ideal locations are, and I think that that might really be specific to each location, each municipality. So, you know, if we do have an ideal location and we want it stated in the design guidelines, where is that? What kind of, you know, zones or what kind of areas would we rather have these things in if if we if we do get a set? Also, you know, the light plant is planning on undergrounding a lot of areas, and we know that they have a plan and place to do that. We might want to put in specific language that references their ability to designate certain poles as those, you know, being decommissioned in the next so many years, and maybe disallow applications that look to put equipment on those poles just to prevent any, you know, barrier that they would have to removing those poles were they to fully underground. The application or the requirements for the application does say that it's limited to five sites per application. The FCC does say that applications can be combined in batches. So, you know, this was adopt or this was put in there based on some of the other policies, but it is a question for us in terms of, you know, what burden do we want to put on applicants and what burden do we want to put on staff who are having to review these? You know, if, say, a carrier wanted to install 50 of these facilities, that's going to be 10 applications. It might create more of a headache for our staff and for the board to, you know, work like that, and there may be no advantage to actually restricting that to five sites per application. And then there are design guidelines that talk about the look and and style and appearance of this equipment, and they've been adopted from some of the standards and other municipalities, but it may be that we have either more strict or less strict design guidelines that we'd like to see, or certain things, maybe in certain areas, that might be different. So, you know, I'm looking for everybody's input in those areas as well. And that's really all I had for my presentation.
Thank you very much, Jason. Questions from the board? Linda?
Yeah, thank you for all your work on this and moving this forward. I know that you mentioned there have been a number of court challenges already. Is there, do you have any insight on what some of the outcomes have been from them?
Yes, so in general, municipalities who challenge the FCC's declaratory declaratory ruling have not been successful, and that in general, when communities delay more than is allowable or they create undue burden on these applicants, the applicants are losing, are winning those challenges. So we don't have a lot of leeway, which is why the policy seeks to establish, you know, the most strict requirements that we can, that are allowable under the law. But you're right, there are continual challenges, and there's nothing to stop the FCC from issuing another declaratory ruling that might change or further hamper municipalities' ability to regulate these. There's also another hitch is that the FCC did reference policies that come into existence before the 2019 period, and a couple of these other communities did get their policies adopted before then, Concord has not, but, you know, there's no reason to think that because others have established this, that that carriers or other applicants would have a problem with our our process, but it's just something to keep in mind that, you know, there are a lot of different ways that these have been challenged, and, you know, it's it's up to the town to determine how much they want to fight to protect the design guidelines and requirements that we can we can put in place.
So it was very helpful to see the list of questions that you had at the end for us to think about in terms of additional comments or input for the policy. And I assume you're seeking that simultaneously with seeking legal counsel?
Yeah, so I think our, Carrie and I talked about this, and Carrie, you can chime in if you like, but we did want to give the board a chance to, you know, review this and give their input. We wanted a chance for the public to give their input. We wanted a chance for town departments and divisions to give their input, and we wanted a legal counsel to review it. We didn't want to go too far down the path of legal counsel reviewing it if there were going to be substantial changes by the board or the public. If we get the advice from you that, you know, we're we're close, there just might be minor modifications, then we can certainly start that legal review now so that the policy can be adopted sooner.
Yeah, that certainly makes sense at one level. I have, if I may, just a couple of the questions here, related to the question you posed about other aesthetic considerations. You know, my understanding, at least when I saw some initial material on this, is that we were restricted from specifying too much that would limit the carrier's ability to install these. So it's a little hard to know how to navigate the suggestions we might make, you know, you know, can can we?
Yeah, so, you know, I I think that starting with this policy that has been vetted by other town and city councils and has withstood applications and have been processed, and I I think that this is a good place to start. I think that it's certainly good to get input on those, you know, things that we would like to have, maybe get them down, and then we can look at the feasibility. And in our legal review, we can ask our council to determine if these go too far out of the bounds of what the FCC will allow. We can also, you know, state preference. You know, that's why I asked, the policy does say our ideal location. There's nothing that stops us from requesting things. A lot of these carriers want to be good partners to the town. They understand that they they benefit when the town is happy with their work, so they're they're not, you know, it's not really like the town versus them. It's it's more just the town protecting its interests and getting as much as as we can that we want to make Concord the place we all want to live in and work in. So, you know, I think that getting those down is a good start, and then, you know, we can work with council to determine what might be safe, and then maybe we can talk about the ones that are in that gray area.
Thank you, and and I have a follow-up to that question. I also really liked that slide you had on topics to consider, and it's making me think that we need input, which you might have already done by circulating it to, for example, the HDC, CMLP, the Planning Board, zoning Board of Appeals. Are you going to be seeking input from those boards? And probably others, too?
Right, yeah, so I think that our our roadshow here tonight was to get suggestions on that. I think that it's it's entirely reasonable to get feedback from all these different boards and committees. Again, I think that at this point, we are limited. We don't want to get people too excited about what requirements they can throw in there if they're not going to be ultimately allowed legally. So, but we do want people aware of them, and we want, you know, input where they have it if it falls within the bounds. So in my opinion, the more the merrier, the more people that can see this and have a a chance to participate in it, the better.
Great, and the reason that I bring that up is because the select board, for example, we're not experts in the aesthetics or the light poles or the zoning, but that these boards, that's their mission, that's their charge. They would have the best input on that.
Well, except for that these are in the right-of-way, so HDC and the Planning Board and the ZBA don't really have jurisdiction. It's really Public Works and ourselves that that would have jurisdiction over most installations.
Even aesthetics and?
Well, I mean, aesthetics is kind of, again, you know, on private property, right, is the charter of the HDC.
Okay. Henry?
It's it sounds to me like the focus of these regulations is to be as restrictive as permitted under the FCC guidelines. And so I think the first question that we need to answer before we get into the details is whether we want to encourage or discourage the proliferation of 5G facilities. I I don't know whether these facilities will are are going to be the solution to our our cellphone coverage issue. If if that is the way we're going, and that is how we're going to respond to that question, it seems to me that we don't, it would not be in our best interest to be as restrictive as possible or as we, and, you know, you listen to these or list of regulations and applications and criteria and approvals and all that stuff, and you certainly certainly sounds like a system which is designed to make it as difficult and as expensive as possible for utility companies to to provide these services. Now, if that's what we want to do, okay, that's, I think we're doing that.
Well, Henry, I think I think our objective is probably that we want to have some policy on the books because we have these shot clocks, and if a 60-day limit and a 90-day limit, if somebody applies tomorrow, we don't have any policy. So that is one of the main objectives.
Well, I understand the desire to have a policy, but that doesn't mean if, and I say, you have to answer that first question, do you want to encourage or discourage this activity? If you want to discourage it, I think we're probably succeeding, and we have the ability to do it through these regulations. If in fact 5G coverage in the town is something we want, we can still have regulations that are less restrictive and less burdensome that would give us control, which I assume we can also make them stricter in the future. But we could have regulations that would that would impose reasonable restrictions and reasonable costs and and a and a practical application process that doesn't have like 10 copies of this and 20 copies of that, and has to go in front of three or four different boards and all that stuff if you want it to happen. But I'm saying that maybe we don't want it to happen, and if we don't want it to happen, I think this is a good way to do it. If we don't want, but if we do want it to happen, let's think about doing something that's a little bit more practical. And I would say that if we're going to have regulations of this kind that the board, certainly I don't understand, not not just in the detail, but in the practical, in the practical consequences of them, that we would should have them reviewed by a consultant, because this is a complicated kind of thing, just as we have had other things like the cell tower regulations reviewed by consultants. But the most important thing when you engage a consultant is that you also tell them what your primary goals and objectives are, rather than just say, hey, have a look at this, review them.
Carrie, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I I do think it might be helpful if Jason could answer the question about whether or not 5G installation would improve or materially materially impact the cell service in the town center or in the town in general.
No, I don't, I don't think it would. You know, these small wireless facilities are, travel very low or short distances in terms of their coverage. They have to be spaced very close together. If you drive along 2A or other corridors, they're placed on either every pole or every other pole, mainly to give drivers along those roads coverage while they're driving. They may help some people who are in in homes nearby get coverage, but in in that downtown area where we've already undergrounded, there are no utility poles to attach to. They would need to find other structures, buildings or rooftops that they could they could put these antennas in. But no, I don't, I, these are, these are very low-distance facilities. They're not, you know, they're going to aid the coverage of service like across downtown or across large swaths of Concord.
So what is their function? What do they do?
Well, they they provide internet service, you know, that so high-speed internet service.
Very fast, yes.
Yeah, so in other words, rather than, you know, doing our fiber network or Comcast or something, you could do this wireless network, and you'd get similar kinds of throughput. So that it's an option that is growing in in terms, you know, especially in kinds of cases in which it's expensive to run cable. You know, it's an alternative approach that people are using, and also, of course, the providers are able to use some of the, you know, the same plans and stuff. Let's say you belong to Verizon, you could get your broadband as well as your cellular mobile coverage from the same provider in a bundled package. So that's the kinds of things that are driving the business.
Right, so I think that it's not necessarily what the select board wants, but I think we are going to have some applications for this, and and we need to be prepared.
Well, and it actually, it could be a good option for, for example, you know, these big multi-unit dwelling complexes where it's, you know, prohibitively expensive to run cable.
Okay, all right.
Or more remote parts of town where we have been talking about the this issue of of the internet coverage, right?
Although there's a sort of limited, because it still does need to be in close proximity, so there is a sort of a trade-off. It needs to be fairly high-density.
So it doesn't work, then?
Financially, at least, at this mo point.
Okay.
But I think that the objective really isn't so much to say, hey, you know, go away, is as it is that if an installation comes, we don't want it to look like the ones that he showed the picture of with all the wires hanging out and everything. And we do have, you know, if you're trying to apply for a special permit in the town of Concord, you look at the list of requirements, it's not very different from this. Okay, I mean, now, you could again debate whether that's a good thing.
That's a different discussion.
But but I'm just saying that, you know, Concord is a town that cares how things look and where things go, and we don't want to suddenly have dozens of
Right.
structures going up all over the place and people panicking.
So I mean, what we're, what you're saying is that this is a facility that has limited usefulness, and it's not something we really feel urgently about having, so that...
Except for that there are regulations from the federal government that could make it suddenly an urgent thing thrown upon us.
What I, what I, what I mean is that it's, it's, it's not, it it makes sense to regulate it strongly because it's not something we are, we urgently desire.
And it's, it's new, and we want to go carefully, I think, you know? So now, could I go through a few questions here? So first, Jason, on your draft policy, I would say stylistically, I, you know, while we use that wherethes in proclamations, we don't typically have that style for our policy documents. So I think that the whole preamble could be rephrased to be a little less 18th century. And then the, I found a typo, which is item L under application process, there's just the word A that's on approved on A-poles. Then the design guidelines say that the maximum size is 28 cubic feet, which, you know, is three feet by three feet by three feet plus one foot. So that's a pretty big box. It's a great big box. You showed that sort of best practice installation was more like three, four cubic feet, and and that does seem to actually be much more typical. Is is there something that's driving that 28-foot maximum?
Uh, no.
A cubic foot, excuse me?
Adopted, adopted from handover Burlington to Medford. So I think it's reasonable to look at that, to see what is standard, and you also have to keep in mind that sometimes 40 feet up in the air, you know, it it looks a lot smaller on the ground than it than it actually is.
Yeah.
You know, I think that we could probably look at that to see if we can get it smaller, but I can also check to see what the FCC says about size limitations.
Yeah, because, I mean, I I saw some of the sort of flying saucer types that look okay. They're like maybe 12 cubic feet, maybe? I'm not sure, but but 30, I mean, 28 seems pretty, pretty big.
Yeah, I agree.
I guess those, oh, and then, you know, we're about sustainability in Concord, so all these paper copies, I mean, can we maybe not have all the paper copies? I mean, again, it gets back to what Henry is saying, are we doing it for the sake of making a bureaucratic red tape, or, you know, we're moving to electronic systems? We probably don't want to have all the paper around. We probably don't want to have all the paper around. So just on that front, I, I wonder if maybe we could get rid of that.
Okay.
Carrie?
Yeah, we're, we're going to finish board questions and then we'll have a few questions from the public. Susan?
Yeah, Jason, thanks for this. There's a lot of information. I understand that this is a, this is a, it's, it's more than a starting point, but the basis of it is what other towns have done, which is a great place to start. My question was about number seven, location requirements, which is on page 12. It says, lists most preferable, co-location preference, least preferable. Is, is there any teeth in that? I mean, can you say you can't put these in residential districts or parks as we're, as we're hoping at the bottom? I don't know whether this is a recommendation or a requirement for location, how much control we have.
It's a recommendation. We don't have, we can't prohibit them outright in, in most areas. They, as Matt mentioned, that they don't have to abide by historic districts or any other aesthetics in terms of requirements. We can just make recommendations. There are certain things we can require if it's not an undue burden on the applicant. So I think it, it actually depends on what we can do based on what we're asking and where they're looking to do it. So if they're, if they have flexibility and, and it's not a problem for what they're trying to do, then we can require it. But if there isn't, then we can't. I don't know, it's, it's kind of confusing, but the goal of the FCC was to not prohibit, you know, installers from, from putting these in, into communities. So if there, if there is an undue burden put upon the applicant, then the municipality is not going to be able to do it.
Thank you.
I did have one legal question.
Okay.
Which was that you mentioned that, of course, the municipalities that have kind of slow-walked applications or that have challenged the law have kind of failed. But have there been challenges to policies of this sort and how have they fared?
I will get that information for you. I don't know if you can.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question about, in the policy, it says that the town manager's office is the one that's going to put together the paperwork for the hearing and review periodically the statistics on it, et cetera, et cetera. So I guess this question maybe is for Carrie, whether the town manager's office really has the capacity to take on this new assignment or whether you want to consider a different office or, I, I don't know.
You can always add or designate.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I'm interested to see what Carrie thinks about, about this.
I think when the office is fully staffed, it won't be an issue, and I hope that is in the not-too-distant future. I mean, these, there may be a flurry of them initially. There isn't anything prohibiting 5G installation now, and we have, we're working with one applicant right now on the building permit side because it's a, it's a request to co-locate on an existing antenna that the town owns. And so we're, we're working at it from, from that side. It's, it's a little extra work because it's new and this one happens to be on Bedford Street in proximity to Hanscom Field, so we're coordinating, requiring a review by Massport as well. But I, I don't see that it, it's going to be a huge impact.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're not burdening the office.
But it does bring up one other thing, which is Carlin Reed had sent a letter asking about, you know, revenues, diverting basically the revenues for the application.
And I think Carlin is here and is going to comment on that.
Okay, because it just struck me that our administration cost for processing the permits is likely close to what the fees that we're charging are, and so there really aren't that many funds left. I mean, and it's not the same situation as with Comcast or even the payment in lieu
Franchise.
Franchise that, that the light, Concord Light Internet is paying, it, it's, there's no service provision here at all for, you know, paying a fee. So I, it just doesn't seem that appealing to me.
I, I didn't see that request until today. Application fees are general fund revenue and it is very hard to segregate it and, and give it to another entity. We certainly can take a look at it, but I think just a first review of it would indicate that we would not be able to dedicate that revenue to any particular group or board community.
I mean, and again, I think, isn't it an aspect of the policy that we're supposed to only charge what it costs to do, to process the application? So if we then made this thing where we're providing revenue to our Media, that's implying that we have residual money from it.
But this is, seems to me the ideal kind of application that could be made, an online application, because the applicants are commercial entities who are, will not be intimidated by the fact that they're filling out applications online like...
I don't think that we're going to produce an online application, though. That's a significant amount of work, right? We have, for, for things that are repetitive types of applications, right, we have a, the permitting system. Would we be creating one for this?
Yeah, Jason, that's probably a good question for you. I, I know Jason is working with that.
Yeah, we certainly can. It would come at an expense to the town. I think it might be worth evaluating how many of these we get. I think Matt's point is a good one, that if these, if we get 100 a year, it probably makes sense. If we get two a year, it probably doesn't.
Right. Carlin, did you want to comment?
Yes, please. Carlin Reed, 83 Woodson, it was actually a question about who conducts the hearing. Most wireless proceedings in town are held by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and yet this one is being considered to be held by the Select Board. I would recommend that you consider who is the better organization to handle this. All I can imagine is the dog hearing situation all over again. And I think a better equipped group to handle this, pardon me for saying this, would be the Zoning Board of Appeals because they may have more expertise in handling wireless installations. If you all folks want to do it, that's great. I've just got a recommendation for you on that.
It's just because of the sighting. You know, the large-scale towers are typically sighted on, you know, private property or other, you know, parcels where there would be that jurisdiction, but, you know, these tower, these, sorry, these antennas typically would be, you know, in the road effectively. So that, that's not the ZBA's territory.
Okay, so that's the reason why it would be the Select Board instead of the ZBA?
Why it has to kind of come to us.
But it doesn't have to be, right? It's, well, it's something we can look into.
To think about, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Well, and by the way, the planning board also looks at those applications.
Right, so I, I really think this should be circulated to many of the boards in town.
In departments, right?
Yeah, I'm assuming that, that many staff people have already looked at it, or they will.
Yeah, I, I think Jason and I talked about maybe a 30-day public comment period. I, I did see maybe a May 1 date in the document that, that may have been based on the thought that maybe this would come to the Select Board sooner than that. But Jason, a 30-day comment period, does that...
I think that seems reasonable.
Okay. Are there other questions from the public? Anybody? I can see the Zoom screen, so you can raise your hand or your virtual hand. Okay, I don't see any. Well, Jason, thank you for all the work you're doing on this. Certainly, I think we're making some progress and we'll see what happens after the 30-day comment period and probably end up having another discussion at that time.
Good, thank you.
We are now ready to move on to our town meeting items. Before we take any specific articles, I just want to briefly go over some housekeeping that the Select Board needs to do because it got very late at the last meeting and I don't think I was really clear. So what we're going to do is, we have a tentative list here for each article. We're just going to make sure that's our list or see if we have any changes. There are three things we have to do if your name is on the list. You're a backup person for that article in case there are questions at town meeting. You are also going to make a brief presentation at town meeting if tonight the board decides that that article needs any kind of a presentation. Most of them do not. And also, the board might decide that we need a one paragraph or two paragraph blurb to be handed out. And if that's the case, Carmen wants to know by Thursday, so we have to make that decision today. So I think we're just going to look through each article briefly and make sure that we're all set and see if anyone needs to trade assignments.
Does anybody have an extra copy of that list? I can't find mine. Thank you.
Great.
First thing I'd like to have you do on this list is delete the comments and say, Mr. Dane was unintelligible.
Okay, I did not write this list and I don't know where it says that, but okay.
Next to four and six, and that's the only comments on the column that I was unintelligible.
Yeah, it's not, it's not on this other list. I think he took it off already. I don't see it on here, but thank you for pointing that out. I think if you just speak right up to the microphone, you wouldn't have, won't have any, yeah, there were, okay. So we're, I see that some people have a lot of assignments, maybe the other people might volunteer for some more. And then finally, when we finish that, we're just going to talk about how we're going to back Matt up, and Matt's already, Matt will be out of town at a wedding, right?
I'm going to be at a, out of, out of the country. I'll be in Italy.
Awesome. Can we come? Can we come? Yeah.
I think that that would make a little disruption to town.
So anyway, Matt has taken the liberty of writing up already some items for handouts and making our job easier. So let's just take a look through. Number four, five, and six, Susan, I put you down if you're the liaison.
That's fine.
And I don't think you're going to have to speak. I don't think we need a handout. And then for seven, eight, nine, and 10, I am the speaker. So it's sort of an insurance policy. I don't think we need a handout for seven, eight, nine, or 10, right?
Right.
Okay, 11 and 12 is Matt.
Right, and I wrote a statement for 11, though I don't expect that there will be any discussion requiring our comment.
Okay, so what we could...
But I can make that statement available to anyone to, to read.
Right, so we just need, let's say, one volunteer to be able to get up and read that statement if necessary.
I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
And then Article 12 is on the consent calendar.
Right. Okay, 13 and 14 I think are on consent calendar. I will handle those. I don't think we need any written statement. Number 16 is also, well, I don't think it's on consent, but it's...
It is not, and I've written a statement for that as well.
Okay, this is the synthetic turf.
That's right, so.
Who would like to volunteer if the Select Board is asked?
It's just a matter of reading, reading Matt's statement, is that correct?
That's right.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Well, if we need to, right?
Yeah, we probably don't need to.
You probably won't need to.
This is a big insurance policy.
If suddenly there's debate, you know?
That's right.
Then there, there's a position statement that we agreed upon.
Right, okay. 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 and 22, I am doing those. The only one that I think we might have to make a statement on is number 18. And actually, this is difficult because we're not even going to be able to take a position tonight, which I'll go over when we get to that. I'll talk that over with Carmen about how we're going to handle that. And we're going to discuss that in detail in a few minutes. So let's go on to 23. We may need to put a, put a blurb in a handout about number 23.
So I've written a statement for Article 23.
All right.
And I do believe that we should proactively make a statement for Article 23 as it's a petition warrant article and we voted affirm, you know, to recommend affirmative action.
Right, and I think it should be in a handout also.
Right, which would be...
Article 23 is the ranked choice voting.
And...
And we voted in favor, three to one.
Right, so I...
We would, we would have a statement.
So you don't want me to make that statement?
Well, I mean, you're welcome to. I mean, you'd be representing the board.
It was a dissenting vote.
I know, but you can still represent the board.
Of course.
So, and, you know, I, the, we just had that sent out to the board today, right?
Right.
So you can please all members read the statements if you disagree, if you don't think it reflects the consensus of the board, we should correct these statements.
They were good, because I...
Yeah, I thought they were well-done.
They were really well-done.
That's good, because, okay, thank you for doing that, Matt. Okay, would anybody...
Who's going to read 23?
Right, who's going to read 23? I think it should be either, I have Susan, Linda, or myself.
I'll do it then. Okay. All right, Linda is 24, 25, and 26. Right, and I will be writing up something for each of those.
Okay, so let's...
Probably going to take more than that on, on the floor.
Right, you will probably have to speak.
Yep.
So which of these should be in the handout? Maybe 24 and 25 need to be in the handout? I'm not sure.
Well, I think all three are going to need to be in the handout. Just because of the relatedness of some of these issues?
Okay, that sounds good. So far, we have 23, four, five, and six in the handout. We do not have, I don't think, another opportunity to debate the wording of the handout. We might have that opportunity on April 25th. I'm not sure. We may have to send in our handout earlier than that.
Didn't you say it was due Thursday? Or is that...
On Thursday, I have to tell Carmen if, for which ones we're going to have speakers in handouts. But I'm not sure, I don't know if you know, Carrie, if we have to have the exact wording.
And that's different from statements, what you're saying.
Well, I think it'll probably be the same, probably.
But, so the things that were, like, for instance, on this list, that statements have been drafted, that that will be in the handout.
Right.
Okay.
But the ones that Linda's writing...
Yeah.
But, but I thought we said some of these we may not need a handout on?
Right.
But, but for the ones... So we haven't gotten to that point yet, have we?
Well, we just decided that your three, 24, five, and six are going to be in a handout.
Yeah.
So we won't have an opportunity before April 25th when we meet again, in case we really don't like the wording. I, I doubt that's going to happen, but...
Well, it also has to do with the organization of these. So, you know, Matt had numbers all over the place in terms of the articles you were writing up, but they may or may not...
Wait, we only agreed that number 23 is, so far, is in the handout for Matt.
Okay, good, yeah, good, okay, good.
27 and 8 I'm doing, and they're on the consent calendar. 29, I'm doing that one. It doesn't say on the list, but I'm doing that one. And I don't think we need to write anything up to that. What do we do? 30, Linda is doing, I'm not sure. What do you think about 29 and 30? Do you think we need to put them in a handout or not?
I don't think 29.
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
31 is Matt. I think that we don't need a handout on that. That's consent calendar. 32, we are going to talk about tonight again, right? Is that on our list for tonight? Yes. Okay, Linda is doing that one. I'm not sure, so we might need a handout. I'm not sure, so we might need a handout, I don't know yet, let's see. 33?
I've written a statement.
Okay, so let's put that in the handout.
Yeah, I think that's the appropriate.
Okay. 34 is on the consent calendar, Linda, you have that. 35, we're going to talk about that again in a minute. We'll probably, let the planning board probably handle that one. 36, I'm doing, and I don't think we needed any handout. 37, board to petition, can't quite read this, forget this, sorry.
It's your checkout bag.
Oh, yeah, checkout bag.
We haven't delivered it.
We haven't finished that one.
Well, we've delivered it, we haven't decided.
All right, so maybe on that, and Matt, so Matt, you haven't written it up yet then, right?
Right, I put TBD, because until we decide, I don't know what to say.
Right, okay. 38, I think we're all going to be okay on that.
I've written up a statement for 38.
Yeah, and I don't.
Yeah, it probably doesn't need to be in the handout.
No, but actually, backing up.
It's available in case people need it as a backup.
Backing up, though, we need someone to cover for Matt for 37, 8, and 9.
Right, so 37, I will rate, write the statement, just somebody needs to say, you know.
Read the statement.
Read it.
Okay, who wants to volunteer?
I'll do that.
Okay, thanks, Susan. How about 38?
It's only in the backup case, I think.
Right. I'll do that one.
Yeah, I can do that.
Linda, you're doing 38?
Yep.
Okay, 39?
It's on the consent calendar, I don't think it's going anywhere.
Okay, all right, now we're on Henry, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44. I think we're all set on those. 45 and 6.
So I've written a statement for 45, but once again, I, I think it's only a backup statement.
Right. Who wants, who is the recreation, oh, you must be the recreation.
I'm the recreation liaison.
All right. Who wants to volunteer to do the backup for 45?
BD Center, anybody?
I can do it.
Yeah, Henry hasn't done many.
But you've written something?
I've written something, yep. I have to do is read it.
All right, Henry, you can do 45. 46, I'm going to put a big question mark, because we haven't, we're about to debate it again, and you probably haven't written that up, right, Matt? Oh, Susan.
No.
That's right, Susan, you're doing that.
Didn't we vote on 47?
No, we didn't.
Voted on 47, right?
Right, I was sorry.
Susan, you might have to write up something on 46.
Yeah, I, I would think so.
All right, so that's going in the handout.
Definitely needs a handout.
Yeah.
All right, 48 and 9 are on, are no motion, so to review.
So 47, is there a write-up here for that one?
47 should be written up and put in the handout.
You think so, 47?
Well, both, I mean, don't you think that 46 and 47, I don't know.
Yeah, 47 doesn't seem very controversial.
It was less controversial.
Yeah, okay, I'll do this.
Maybe a very brief thing. Okay, so here's what's going in the handout that I'm going to tell Carmen. 23, 24, 25, 26, maybe 32, we're going to decide in a minute, 38, I mean, 33. And 46 and 47. Did I miss any?
No.
It's all set.
So the only one I'm questioning is whether or not we should have something for the scenic roads bylaw, which is 30, 30, we said no handout necessarily, but I'm, but you might be, have to be prepared to speak on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, very good. So I think we've covered all of that. Any other questions on that? Okay, great, so now we are ready.
Just to clarify, all those need to be to Carmen by Thursday.
No, no.
No, I just have to tell Carmen.
You have to tell her.
And then, but as soon as possible, send it, please send your blurbs to Robin, and she'll distribute.
Okay.
And we can't debate by email, but if we need some wordsmithing, hopefully, we, we are allowed to do it on April 25th, because we don't have to actually produce the handout.
The deadline is April 22nd for the handouts to go to the moderator, so I, I would suggest at least a draft be provided to her on the 22nd.
Let's do that, let's send her, send it to Robin and Carmen by the 22nd. Okay, great, all right.
I mean, it'd be great if this was all just assembled into one document.
Actually, I was just thinking that, just send it to Robin, I will assemble the whole thing. It should all be on a one or two page.
Oh, like this?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
In order, right?
In order, that's right. So I will send it to Carmen as a draft by the 22nd. Okay, now we are moving on to articles specifically, and I just want to talk very briefly about what's going on with Article 18. So we only have six articles left that we haven't taken position on, so that's pretty good. Article 18, we still cannot, I don't recommend taking position tonight, but I'm going to spend one minute explaining about it. So there's still a $312,000 gap between the FINCOM guideline and the school committee budget vote as of Thursday night, April 7th. They had a great joint meeting, but they didn't come to agreement.
Can I, can I just ask what the?
Yes.
If you can comment on what the general tenor of the conversation was.
Right, so that's what I'm going to get to. So Dr. Hunter explained that they've already cut two kindergarten teachers, they've reduced nurses, taken $120,000 from retirement, they're using $75,000 from Circuit Breaker, and cut for tutors. And these are cuts from their request, not from last year's budget. And the only place left to reduce would be special ed, professional development, support staff, or the STEAM lab. And then on the other side, the FINCOM is saying, well, you know, the teacher salaries are up 4.8%, and they're going to continue to increase over the next few years. So the Concord Public Schools slice of the pie is growing every year and crowding out the other sectors. So they're not so worried about the $312,000 as, as they are about the upcoming years. So after a long discussion, the Finance Committee Chair is going to reach out to the school committee with a proposal. They have a specific proposal in mind to try to work out a compromise and close this gap. So I personally don't think the Select Board should get involved at this point, I'm just thinking those two groups should work on it and talk. And once they either work out a compromise, we can take a position, if they don't work out a compromise, we still have to take a position. But I don't think tonight is the right time. Does anyone want to try to take a position tonight?
I, I'm not sure I want to take a position, but I, it seems pretty clear when you talk about those numbers, if we're talking about a, maybe a 3% increase in the levy limit, and, and teachers are getting close to 5% increase, that's not a sustainable thing.
Correct.
And I understand that the teacher contracts in Concord are among the richest in the state, so we have to decide if we need to fund at that level for salaries when it's, it comes clearly at a, at a cost to other parts of the school budget.
Right, the way they've been making it work is by cutting other parts of the school budget. So that's the dilemma, and it will continue for the next several years.
Because the other question about that was, is it, is three-year contracts they negotiate in three-year time spans?
I believe so.
So I don't know where it is in the cycle right now, but it seems to me that that should be top of list next time they go through this process.
There has to be a, a cost for being generous in the contract negotiations.
There is.
I mean, a cost that is felt, and so that if we do not take a position in favor of the Finance Committee guidelines, then we are merely, we are not sending the message when you sit down at the bargaining table next time, things, other things may have to go.
Right, if that.
Like pencils or football helmets or.
Level of increases.
Erasers.
Is desired.
So are you wanting to take a position now?
Let's wait and see if they settle.
Okay, okay, then let's move on. The next one is Article 35, and I understand.
You mean 25?
No, 35, we're, we're still on this line here. 18 and 35 I put first.
18 and 25.
Oh, well, that, my version says 35, and that is.
So does mine.
That's the correct, that's weird. Well, anyway, I don't know, 35.
No, 25 is the Assavet River.
Yeah, we're going to do that next, but these two, I thought we would just get off the table quickly, that was really stupid.
All right, it's, it's on my motions document that it says 25.
Oh, okay, no, the agenda, all right, the reason 35 is on, because it's really quick. The Planning Board, I understand, took no action on 35, so I thought we could just have a very quick discussion and check it off.
That's very interesting.
Call it no action? I think that they voted to recommend affirmative action.
No, I don't think.
Four to one.
No, I don't think they did. This is.
The summary say.
This is the planned residential development?
Oh, to change the open space percentage?
Right.
Oh, oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, I was thinking of the wrong one, never mind, yes.
All right.
I'm really running this straight.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot going on. So the Planning Board, I think they were unanimous.
They were unanimous.
Okay.
Yep.
So I think their reasoning was that we're already covered by other bylaws, and that this will make it too difficult. I don't know, I don't exactly remember their whole reasoning, but who's the Planning Board liaison, Linda?
I am, but I can't, I knew the outcome, but I don't remember the exact reasoning.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I apologize, I had it from Burton. But anyway, I'm pretty sure they're unanimous, they do not want town meeting to take action on Article 35. So I personally would defer to their judgment, because I'm no Planning Board expert. Does anybody want to get more information, or are we ready to vote? Discussion? Okay.
I, I, so I move that we recommend no action on Article 35.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's no action on that one, okay. Now we're on 25.
Okay.
Which might be a long discussion, but I just want to say that we received many, many letters in support of this project. And I want to thank everybody who sent letters to the Select Board, many of which are in last week's packet or this week's, and many others which didn't even make it into the packet. There are numerous, numerous letters in support of this project, and I think zero letters against the project.
Yeah, I got something personal, but it wasn't a Select Board headline.
All right, so we'll have board discussion. I don't want to spend a lot of time, if any, on public comment, because we've had two rounds of that already. Where are people on Article 25 right now?
Could, could I just have one more question that I have?
Okay.
So it's really about the funding for the project, because, you know, as presented, the funding states that the, the two land trusts would be putting in $1.2 million, and then the town would be putting in the remainder of the funds from various sources. And we heard that they had raised over $900,000, which is quite an achievement, but it's actually less than the 1.2 million that is the 42% share of the land cost that the land groups were to raise for the project. And yet, I heard last time that, you know, because they had raised more than $700,000, that there was going to be a fund, assuming we get this $500,000 grant, for creating an ADA trail and other, you know, creating a, a, a fund that would be used for the open space component. And it just seems strange to me, because really, it would seem that up until there's a $1.2 million contribution, that all of the money should go towards the land acquisition costs, and that if they exceeded 1.2, then those additional, you know, funds could be established, and that would be fantastic. But if it's short of 1.2, then that means that the share of the purchase price that's borne by the town is more than the amount that was described, you know, in the plan.
Okay.
And so, and I, I realize there's this grant, but that's sort of, you know, from a cash flow perspective in particular, it's after the fact, and.
Right.
Secondly, that those funds are town funds.
Right.
So I've, I've asked the question a couple times, is what happens?
Right, me too.
You know, with these funds, I still don't know.
I think Carrie is probably able, or Liz, to answer that. And let me just say, it's a great problem to have, because we didn't anticipate that the fundraising would be so successful.
Well, except for that we did, because, I mean, that's the plan, to raise 1.2 million.
All right.
We haven't gotten there yet, we hope to.
Okay, well, Liz.
So if we exceed the fundraising or get the grant, we expect to set aside those surplus funds into the stewardship for the project.
And, and what does that mean, stewardship from the project?
So that would be for immediate and future improvements, so the ADA or establishing or, or, and establishing a fund for endowment to maintain the property.
But.
If we exceed and get the grant.
But, so where is that documented? Because it's not in the MOU.
No, it's not.
So how do, how does this happen?
Um, how does this happen?
I mean, it's money, I mean, I guess, does the grant, do the grant terms say, state, set that up, or where does it, where is this stewardship fund described, other than in this meeting?
Well, I think that we weren't really anticipating that the fundraising to be so successful so early, so.
But we're not yet at 1.2 million.
No.
So it's not yet.
So it might not happen, that's why I was saying, that, that there might not be surplus funds, so this would only be if there were surplus funds and the grant was received.
Well, actually, it says 1.2 million is fundraising and grants combined.
Right, but we might not get the grant.
Right.
So, so part of it is, would you specify all of that without knowing whether we're going to get the grant?
Right, right.
We anticipate that we'll know about getting the grant before town meeting.
Oh, good.
So once we know that, I think that we can make more certain plans, but that's the current thoughts. I have a question about that. I thought earlier that there were two applications for two different grants, each of which was $500,000, but only one would be awarded. And what are the stipulations for each, and can that money be used in the same way? Well, I think if we get the first grant, we wouldn't.
So, Liz? This is Delia Kay, I'm on, I'm on the call, if, if it's helpful, I can answer that question.
Thank you.
So we have applied for a land and water conservation funds grant in the amount of $500,000 for the acquisition. We are also anticipating, if we are not successful in that grant, we're anticipating to apply for the MVP grant, and that would be for $500,000 towards the land acquisition, plus funding for, you know, so MVP looks for something a little bit different, they're looking for more innovative, and so we, we would seek for reimbursement for the ADA, the all-persons' trail construction, for engagement for invasive species removal. So it's a little bit different, but from the standpoint of the acquisition itself, both grants are being sought for $500,000. We will only be able to receive funding for one in the event that we are successful for either.
So Delia, you're only going to apply for the MVP grant if you don't get the other grant, and you're going to know in. And you're going to know in time to make.
We are hopeful, we are hopeful that we will learn about the land and water conservation grants imminently. And if we, if we learn about that prior to the deadline for the MVP grant application, which is May 2nd, then we will not apply for that second grant. Because hearing about the land and water conservation fund grant is very good confirmation that we will receive it. It is a federal grant. But if you receive state approval for it, as we understand it, they will only ask you for additional information. They will not turn you down for it. So that's right. If we, if we learn about the LWCF grant prior to the May 2nd deadline for the MVP, then we would not apply for that second grant. It's just a lot of additional work to apply for that second grant.
Right.
But just to clarify, Delia, you said the land and water conservation fund grant that's currently in the pipeline that you're waiting to hear about, that 500 can go towards the land acquisition, whereas the MVP grant is not towards the land acquisition so much as the improvements to the existing, like the ADA pathway and invasive species removal. So it's not part of that.
I'm, I'm sorry if that was not clear. The LWCF grant would be $500,000 towards the open space acquisition solely. The MVP grant might be for more than $500,000. It might be for 600,000. Some funding, which would be towards the ADA trail and other improvements. But 500,000, so it'd be equally 500,000 towards the acquisition. So both of them would be towards, 500,000 towards the acquisition.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I'm still curious, where is this stewardship fund? I mean.
Right, I think Carrie could probably address that. No?
So, so I think that I can address that.
The reason I'm saying that, I thought that you had sent out an email today. Explaining what you would.
Carrie, I think that I can address the, so there's, the original estimates from when we first started working towards this acquisition last fall was a very hopeful $700,000 raised towards the acquisition. And CLCT and SBT have been supremely successful in raising much more than that in pledges, which now are over $900,000. So that overage is money that the land trusts have raised that will go towards a stewardship account. And what we see in that stewardship account is about, I mean, we're estimating now, we're just ballparking because we don't have the numbers. We don't have the survey, we don't have a lot of information. But we anticipate no more than $125,000 of that overage could be used to design and construct an ADA trail. And whatever is above that could go towards a stewardship account or it could go back into town funding for the open space. Because that's what it was raised for. That's what, you know, these donations that SBT and CLCT have raised are for open space.
I mean, I just think of this All Access Pass sounds like a great community preservation committee initiative. But I, this, it's undocumented here. It, it just is coming kind of out of the blue. And I don't understand what the kind of governance process is for this set of decisions.
Is the, and the $900,000 actually money in hand? Or is it pledges?
It's pledges.
Pledges.
And are they conditional or unconditional?
Yes, they are conditional. And so if there's, if there is a situation where there's excess funds, there would be some discussion with the donors to see whether the donors would support either putting them back into the project, into the stewardship fund, or reducing the request from CPC. So that process would have to go on because they are conditional pledges on the project.
And where, where do we, where does it leave us if some of these, some or some portion of these pledges become uncollectible or unpaid? What, what, what position is the town in with regard to the transaction?
Well, I think that the funding.
The deal would close. We, the deal has to close with money in hand.
Yeah, so I think that the funding that's been outlined is, is there. I don't really know how much of a, I don't really know that. You know, we'll have to look into that. The closing is expected for July 29th, I believe. So that there's time from, you know, town meeting approval of the funds as well as getting the grant to then start collecting the cash on the pledges. Right, so there's some uncertainty. So, you know, past town meeting, I think things become certain. The PNS is all signed. So once the funds are committed through town meeting, I think that then the monies can really start to hit the bank and, and address any problems that there might be.
So the town meeting approves it.
Yeah.
And the pledges are collected.
Yeah.
And if there's enough money to close the transaction with the amount of money that's either with the grants.
Right.
Or the, and the CPA money and the town's contribution. And if the private contributions are sufficient, it closes. And if not, it doesn't. And does that mean, and our deposit is refundable in that case still?
I believe so.
Yeah, if the funds aren't available. So I don't know that there's, there's no other town funds. I just want to be clear, there's the CPA funds. And then the trust has those funds. If you're calling the town funds, the trust funds. But those are already, you know, in their account.
Well, and then there's Article 25.
What?
And then there's Article 25.
Then there's Article 25. That's the reimbursed funds for the, for the grant. So if the grant is awarded, the town is fronting that money that's going to get reimbursed by the state.
Well, that's the question that I have. So the reimbursement would go back to the town?
Back to the town, right. So the town's fronting that 500. That's the part that Carrie talked about in her email. The town is fronting that from, from somewhere. And that the, the grant, once it gets approved by the state and then it gets approved by the federal agency, then it gets reimbursed back to the town after the fact.
So that happens whether you have 900,000 in donations or 700 or a million or whatever number you have. Article 25 means that this $500,000 grant goes back to the town. Is that right?
So if we know on, in July, that, that we have the grant, we don't need to access the Article 25 funds.
Okay.
Because we have a, you know.
As long as the other balance is 700,000 or more.
Right.
Okay, good.
Oh, okay.
All right, great. All right, are there questions on Article 25?
I mean, you know, I, really, what I'm getting down to here is, you know, this, to the extent this is a successful campaign, it, it's great news for the open space. But we still have just two units of affordable housing with the hope of creating three more. So I, you know, my objective was to see, is there any way we could get some money into the Affordable Housing Trust or anything to help propel the, the affordable housing aspects of this forward? I mean, it, that's, and it sounds like no. That this is really essentially an open space project that has a couple of units of affordable housing and the hope of more.
Right, right. I think, you know, last Monday, I mean, I agree, I wish we had more units. When I think about it as an affordable housing project, I'm disappointed that we don't have more affordable units.
I mean, they said it was five or none, but it's actually two or none.
Well, anyway, if I think of it as an open space project, then I'm thinking of it a whole different way, that it's a beautiful parcel, it's a great opportunity. We have a lot of community support. So if I think about it that way, that it's an open space project and hopefully, maybe, hopefully, we'll get some housing units, then I can support it. But I think if I just look at it as an affordable housing project, that wasn't working for me, but.
It's not an affordable housing project. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in front of you if it was affordable housing project. The land is too expensive and it wasn't worth doing just for housing. And it was too expensive and not worth doing just for open space. It works really because the two interests are coming together in that way. And, and the two units that are there now as a duplex are not affordable housing. So there would be time.
So we will get two units out of it, which.
Right, so it's not that there's already two affordable units. So, so, and there's, there's enough land to build, you know, additional affordable housing units. So the plan, I think that you've heard through all of the correspondence, has been really discussed and is, is, is very supported through your efforts, right? No opposition. And what kind of affordable housing project have you ever seen without opposition at this juncture? Really not very many. So, so that sort of goes to the collaboration and the partnership that everyone's arrived at this design.
Is there any limitation on the amount of housing that can be built on that one acre other than zoning?
Yes. That all, as we talked about last week, the, the plans and the commitments that were made were up to five or five units of housing.
There's also, I think, a practical limit in terms of the septic, right? I mean, there are, there are other technical limits that could be.
You know, you, you could, if, you could put on more units if it wasn't for the, you know, agreements that all the parties made together. And those discussions were had back then and, and has progressed in this way.
And so I think what I want to acknowledge is that definitely we have had some communications issues. And, you know, that I, I wish in a way that, you know, back when we heard about this deal in November, that we had kind of established a, a minimum, you know, that would guide the negotiations. And we didn't. I think we expressed a hope at that time. And then since then, I think that we haven't really connected the dots in time. And so, you know, I made a last ditch effort in, you know, trying to, but it, it was clear that the concrete had already set. So, you know, at this point, I, I have to just acknowledge that, yep, this one, you know, is what it is. And it is good in, in many respects, is very good in many respects.
So in, in back then, we were just.
It's just that, you know, in the, in the absence of a housing production plan, you know, not knowing where we're going to be in 2030, we may end up feeling like these were the two easiest units we could have gotten in addition. You know, in 2030, we're looking at 40B, you know, we may just go, wow. You know, if only we had gotten two more out of that lot.
Okay.
But, you know, that's, that's 11th inning type of discussions, you know.
Are we ready for a motion?
This game's been played, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, well, it's, Linda?
Yeah, you know, I just want to say that, you know, Matt, you've made some excellent points. And, and we've all learned from this exercise, I think. On the other hand, I want to say that having been in this space for a long time, this, it's extraordinary, the amount of collaboration and the way that different groups came together. And there were so many cross-group conversations. Not all of us, all, all at the same time in the same groups for these conversations. But there was always a, a way to bring them together and try to at least come up with a reasonable plan that would address both open space and the housing plan. I know it's not what all of us would necessarily have liked to have seen. But there are many, many terrific aspects to, to what's happened with this entire project.
Right.
I just dream of a world in which, that's the affordable housing funders that are putting in six figures and are going to walk if the deal doesn't end up being what they want.
Well, the other thing is that.
You know, again, having been in this space, I know exactly, I know exactly what you're talking about.
We're going to need.
Also, the first meeting that we had, we were talking about 11 units. And I only realized now that those were not 11 affordable units. Now, now I'm understanding that, but I didn't understand.
That all five of these are designated as to be affordable.
Oh, right, but those 11 that we talked about.
If we can build them.
If we can build them.
Yeah, I mean, that does bother me because the cost per unit is going to be very high. I, I'm not optimistic about it. But as an open space project, it's absolutely terrific. So.
All right.
Anyway, other discussion, anybody? Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
So, can I, before the board takes a vote on this, can I just make one clarifying statement that even if the grant is awarded, that Article 25 will be needed to some degree as a bridge loan to.
Right.
Put towards the funding.
Right, but, but then it would be reimbursed.
Well, unless 1.2 million.
If, if the grant is successful, then that money would be refunded back to the town. But I, I thought that I heard that if we, if we got the grants, that Article 25 would not be needed. So I just wanted to clarify that we might need it for the interim. But if the grant is successful, that, that money would come back.
Okay. Carrie?
Thank you.
So since I made that statement, let me just clarify. From a cash flow perspective, we, if we have the grant, we, we don't need to borrow the money. I'm not suggesting that you, that you don't support Article 25 or that town meeting doesn't support 25. But I'm, just from a cash flow perspective. We're not going to borrow funds on a short-term basis when we have a grant.
Right.
That we know is coming in.
Okay, very good. All right, now we're ready for a motion.
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article 25 as written in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes five to zero. Thanks again to all the people that worked so hard, sat here for so many nights, sent in all your letters. Thank you very much. Okay, we are on Art.
Thank you, Matt, because you've, you've raised a lot of important points.
Yeah, you gave it the good old try. Okay, Article 32. We have to decide what to do with Article 32. We debated this last time, it's a floor area ratio. I don't remember where we.
No, it's formula business.
A formula business, excuse me. Yes, formula business. And where did we leave off on this?
We were going to wait and hear from the planning board. And then the planning board voted four to one after further discussion to support the article.
All right.
To recommend affirmative action.
And Susan, do you have any comments or questions about? Because you weren't with us last week.
No, I did, I, I watched the tape and, no, I don't have any further.
All right. Is there anybody else who has further comment on Article 32?
Personally, I'd still like to hear from town council after town council's apprised of the article that I mentioned, you know, the, the written article, not the warrant article. And just to hear whether there is an issue with extending to Thorough Depot. If town council feels like there isn't, then I, I'm good to go. I mean, ultimately, it'll be the AG's decision. But I, I just think that the local circumstances here may really matter. And my, my biggest focus is on preserving those formula business regulations that we already have.
Okay, so you would like to delay our vote until?
Personally, that's just my opinion.
What do other people think?
Well, the planning board, you know, discussed this and I think also discussed a point that, or at least referenced the point that Matt had brought up in, in the discussion. And they proceeded to vote four to one, as he mentions.
So. So you're ready to vote?
I'm ready to vote.
All right. Henry?
And I think, you know, town council will be reviewing all the motions and so forth prior to town meeting, so.
Yeah, I just think that unless town council's apprised of this particular situation, I don't know if they're going to.
Yeah, town council reviews for the legal.
Right.
Proper. Proper, it's a slightly different thing, I think.
Yeah.
Henry, are you ready to vote tonight?
I have to change my mind if you, if I change my mind. No.
Susan, are you ready?
Ready, yeah.
All right. Then I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. Move to recommend affirmative action on Article, was it 30?
32.
32.
As printed in the warrant?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So this article passes three to two. And what we can do is we can still ask town council.
Right.
Anyway.
Prior to town meeting.
And we can, if he, if he recommends something, we could reconsider.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, the town council is not going to, I mean, the town council is going to probably say about the same thing they said last time, especially if the planning board, I mean, it's, it's really a matter of what risks you're willing to take rather than whether it's legal or not legal.
Okay.
It's not, it's not really, in, in a sense, it's a legal issue, but it's really a, a risk issue. And at that level, at the level that Matt is talking about anyway, it's, you want, and whether it gets approved by the Attorney General is almost irrelevant.
Right, right. That's not the question, right.
So Matt, can you just remind me and maybe Carrie of the source you were quoting?
It was Mark Bobrowski.
Yeah.
Mark Bobrowski?
An article from 2012 about the dormant commerce clause and the formula business regulation.
Okay, good. Thanks.
So I know you sent me a copy of that map, but I don't know if you've sent it to the other people.
No, I thought it was going to be distributed to the select board. I didn't realize that others had not received it.
Okay.
Actually, I thought everybody had had access to that article.
No.
Oh, well, so that, you know, the, the premise of the article is that, well, there are many discussions around, you know, the ability of a town to regulate formula businesses, but the, one of the factors at the end, specifically referencing Concord's bylaw, said as long, you know, that ours is about as close to the edge as you can get, but because we have really good reasons to want to cultivate the unique aspects of our business districts, that as long as there's someplace else in town for a formula business to be, then it will probably pass muster. That's his opinion. That's, again, there's not said to withstand any kind of.
What he wrote, but Mark Bobrowski.
This is someone who's well informed, right?
He wrote the book, literally, on Massachusetts zoning.
But, you know, it doesn't mean that a judge wouldn't come to a different conclusion. But that said, I consider, you know, since the, the Concord Center and West Concord Business Districts both have very unique character and Thorough Business District has a number of prominent formula businesses that I think in some ways define the district, Starbucks, et cetera, that it's, and that we're making a zoning change right now to Thorough District, meaning that we're trying to change the character of the district, that it doesn't really pass muster for me that this is the objective.
Okay, so.
So, sorry, I'm re-debating this article after it's voted, but.
I think what we're, what we've decided is.
It sounded like people weren't really fully informed.
Right.
I didn't see the article, but I remember the conversation, the discussion from the meeting last week.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, this, this is Carmen Reese, Town Moderator.
Hi, Carmen.
If I, if it would be helpful, I could tell you that Elizabeth Hughes in the Planning Department and I have had some conversation with town council about this article. And I can share with you that town council opines that while ultimately formula business bylaws can be defensible, we've always cautioned that litigation and potentially successful challenges to the formula business bylaws is not out of the question. And that's all I can tell you.
And that is about, and that's about what the Attorney General said in reviewing some of the recent formula business bylaws. And what was not said by town council when they were asked their opinion on the earlier formula business versions in Concord.
Okay.
It's just, I think this one's different.
All right. So we've taken a vote.
It's the nine acre corner is the only other option. And that's identified by this.
Endell Street.
Okay. So we have taken a vote, three to two. Does anybody want to reconsider the vote? Or are we going to just talk to town council again? Or what do you guys want to do?
We have a three to, three to two vote.
Right. We have a three to two vote. So I, I would suggest that unless we hear some new news, okay. All right. We are moving on to Article 37, which is the checkout bags petition article. We have discussed this twice with the petitioner beyond the public hearing. Do people have more discussion, more questions on this? Is that?
I'm ready for a vote.
Is everybody ready to vote? Okay. I guess maybe I just want to have a one-minute discussion. It seems to me that this is an idea, I'm, I'm going to try and summarize what I remember from last time. This seems like a good idea and concept, but it might not be ready for prime time. There were a lot of questions about it still. Is, is that what other people are remembering?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like this is a bylaw that's on the books in many municipalities. So I don't know that saying it's not ready for prime time. I mean, that there were, was feedback that Sudbury, you know, had bylaw and that there were a couple of things that they added that should be considered in this bylaw. And so the petitioner amended his motion.
Right.
And that's what we're considering. And it seemed to me to be fine. It could be fine tuned later if there's some detail, but it's not the same sort of situation of a constitutional risk or a.
No, no.
You know, it, it's really more a matter of what is the practice of the town and what, what are, what are the values that we're trying to project?
Well, what I remember is that Linda brought up some.
Well, I, I did question the impact varied on larger businesses versus smaller businesses and that the feedback he had gathered seemed to be mixed. And so that was one piece of it for me.
Right. And I.
And normally I would be supporting.
Right.
Items like this, but that just left me.
Did you have also some wordsmithing or, or typos or something that needed to be changed? Or, or did we get that all resolved? I don't remember now.
I kept hoping, I did ask to see the motion, you know, the revised motion in writing, and I didn't think we quite got that, but he didn't come.
I thought I saw it.
Well, there were several iterations. And so the, the question is whether the last iteration incorporated all of our concerns. Susan?
Did, I, at one point, I think it was, one of the people who gave feedback said that they were going to bring it to the chamber. And I don't know if that happened or if there's any, anything happened with that.
Okay.
I think all we have is the amended petition article that is, was distributed to us by Robin on April 4th. So that's, that's what we have to work with.
This would be a general bylaw, right?
Yes.
And it has been passed in other towns. And it is a mandatory.
By the way, it's a petition to general court to adopt legislation that would allow us to do so. It doesn't take effect immediately.
Right.
Has it been passed in the legislature?
No, that's what I mean. So we.
But in other towns it has.
Right.
Right. But, but it hasn't been implemented because it hasn't come back from the general court yet.
Right. So this is, this is like our other local petitions, you know?
There might have been one.
My question is.
There's one. I think it was Sudbury. Oh, I thought it was Cambridge.
All right.
Well, there are other towns around here that I go to and they say, there's a bag charge, like Framingham.
Which is what?
There's a bag charge.
By the way, stores can impose it.
Oh, okay. Just the store, but not necessarily the municipal.
My question is, in the absence of legislation, do we have the authority to require merchants to charge a fee for any service?
Until we're offered the, until the special legislation would be approved.
Okay. So we're asking for a special act.
That's all we're doing. Yeah.
Oh, all right.
Right.
So.
Okay. Is everyone ready to vote? All right. Ready for the motion?
So what was the number here?
37.
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article 37 as amended and distributed to us on April 4th.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, three to two again.
If we have, if we have, actually have two people who oppose it here, I think I will vote with them.
Wait a minute.
I will.
Why, Henry? Usually when you make up your mind, you, that's what you're.
Well, I try, I, I, I try to be accommodating to the, to the spirit of the meeting.
But why wouldn't you vote with the two people who supported it?
I didn't have the courage.
Well, the board is obviously really divided. Do we want to reach out one more time to the petitioner and see if, I mean, I'm willing to do that and, and see if we have specific questions. Maybe Linda and I, do we have specific questions?
I think we're at a time where we need to move.
Well, we have another meeting still and it, and the warrant, the FinCom report is gone already and it already says reported town meeting. So if you wanted, I'd be willing to take yours, questions in mind and put them together, but if that, if that would help. If not.
By the way, Framingham does have one. It's cities. It's cities that have these.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Cambridge has one, Framingham's one, has one.
Cities don't, cities don't need the special legislation?
Well, I think they have different rules.
That's weird. That's really weird. Okay. All right. What are we doing here? Are we reconsidering this vote? Or are we going to wait till next week or what? Let's make a decision here.
I, I won't cha, my vote isn't going to change, but it would be good, it's always good to have more information.
I mean, I could, I could support it if we get some of these things tidied up. I just don't think it's, it's quite ready yet.
So is a fair compromise to say that we're taking no position at this time?
We could table it until next meeting.
It's not good etiquette for this life for to take no position.
Right. But we could, we could table it till next meeting.
Okay.
All right. Why don't I?
Well, so.
We have a three to two.
Move to rescind the, the vote taken on Article 37.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I'm going to reach out to Mr. Stein, have a really good conversation with him. Linda, if you have any specific questions or if you want to join me in that conversation, just send me an email and, and I will get these questions answered.
I, I just want to say a lot of places that I go into, even now and in town, will say, did you bring your own bag? And they don't charge me if I don't, but it's a very common, and in Framingham, it's usually the auto checkout, like Stop &amp; Shop or the Target. And it'll say, how many bags did you use? You put in zero, one, two, whatever. And if you put in the number, then they add 10 cents per bag to your check.
But it's just a totally different thing when the merchant charges you for the bag.
That's what they're doing.
No, we're, we're, but we're requiring the merchant to do it. This legislation would say the merchant didn't have a choice. They would have to charge you.
Right.
But if they do it voluntarily, that's a different story.
No, but they do, but, okay, I didn't express it clearly. I think that that's what's happening in a lot of places and it's not a new thing and that people are used to it. I mean, don't you bring your bags to Crosby's all the time now?
I try to.
Even though they don't charge you for a bag?
Yes, I, yes.
Okay. Well, we're going to continue this conversation next time. I'm glad we're putting it off because we obviously still have questions.
There's a big difference between saying that the merchants may charge you for a bag because they don't need our permission to do that. But we're saying that if this legislation passes, they must charge you for the bag. It strikes me as being kind of weird.
Okay. Let's move on to Article 46. This is the last one we have to figure out. Last time, we were discussing the funding source. And then some more information came up at the finance committee meeting about funding source and.
For what?
For Article 46.
Just 75,000 for the study.
Petition.
Right. Carrie, do you want to give us a brief synopsis about this?
So I did, I did send out an email last evening with my thoughts on Article 46. And the, the, the basic, the basic concerns that I have are that this did not go through any public capital improvement planning process. And we do have an annual process that it is generally an internal process, but it's not meant to be secret. And I think we probably need to do more to publicize that. So we don't have these types of projects that, that aren't being vetted through that process. So that is definitely a concern. I did mention that I had to cut projects out of, or I couldn't fund all of the requests because there wasn't enough funding. So there were certain requests that definitely had a lot of merit that weren't able to be funded because of, of the lack of funding. So providing funding for this particular article that didn't go through a process when we couldn't fund all of our own priorities seems a little problematic to me. The, the second point that I would like to make is, is there was mention of one or two existing capital articles that may serve as a funding source for this particular project. One of them was also for a feasibility study for trails, for a capital project that was approved in 2018 for $75,000. None of those funds have been expended. And I mentioned not, not for lack of an interest, but just for lack of ability to advance this particular initiative when other priorities have come up. So that article was for work to be done by the Department of Planning and Land Management. That department is interested in retaining that article and therefore we wouldn't necessarily offer that up as a funding source. The second capital article that was mentioned was just from this past annual town meeting and it was approved for breathing apparatus for the fire department. The full amount was not, did not end up needing, was not needed because we received a grant. We weren't expecting this grant and, and were happily surprised to have received the grant. So there's $105,000 left in that capital article that will not be expended. My original intention was just to use that as a funding source to offset the fiscal 20, fiscal 23 capital. So for that reason, I, I wouldn't necessarily be offering that up as, as a funding source as well. Free cash is, we're not really in a position to be making any more appropriations from free cash. So my suggestion was that if there is an interest in moving this article at town meeting, that we look at taxation, raise and appropriate as the appropriate source due to the timing of when it came into the process.
Madam Chair, I, this is Carmen Reese, Town Moderator. I don't see the petitioner here, but I did have a conversation with the petitioner about his current thinking, which has been evolving on the funding source. And I would be happy to share that with you if you think it would be useful.
Sure. Go ahead.
I believe that the petitioner has taken to heart the observations of our town manager on the use of, on the transfer of previously appropriated capital funds. And he is currently focused on looking at proceeds that the town may receive through the federal infrastructure legislation. And. And it appears that that funding would come to the town through the mass DOT, and his current thinking is that he would advance his article with, to be funded if possible, basically contingent on the receipt of such funds by the town, that he would have seventy-five thousand dollars to fund this study out of those funds. And I have sent that question to both Town Council and the town manager about the appropriateness of, of that approach. But suffice to say that the funding source identified by the petitioner continues to be somewhat in flux.
Thank you, that's, that's new information, thank you very much. So, Linda.
So I also expressed a concern last time about whether it's this project or any similar project that has not had, has not gone through our town department process and committee process. You know, merits aside of what may be, be tried to be accomplished with this particular warrant article, I just feel that it's important that these things are fed into our regular, whether it's our capital appropriation, but more at the concept level as well in terms of fitting with our priorities and having been vetted by our departments and committees.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I, I look at this, and I just look at, okay, the money shall be provided by the tax levy, by transfer from available funds, by borrowing, or any combination of these methods. Looking for future infrastructure funds isn't one of those.
And grant, grant funds don't need to be appropriated by town meeting?
So, yeah, so, I mean, to me, then, this is, it's not working out.
Right, I'm, I'm very persuaded.
I also think that it's, at this point, if you're talking about future infrastructure funds, we're talking about a next year type of thing, you know, and that's the time, I think, to work through this. I mean, I think we've heard, heard discussions about potentially bringing this before the Community Preservation Committee as a possibility, lots of other possibilities here. And I think we, I mean, after a lot of moving around, that seems to be where we're at, is that this is really not a this year item.
I agree, I was really in favor.
As much work as was put into it.
Right, I was really in favor of this article, but I'm really persuaded by what Carrie is saying and Linda is saying, that this needs some more, it's been outside of the process. So if we give it another year and it can go through the process, whether that's the capital process, or the ARPA or infrastructure grant process, or whatever, and it can be vetted properly, because I think it's a good project.
And I've seen a pattern of articles that first year were petition articles, and the second year were sponsored articles.
That's right, that's right.
And that's happened, it happened to me.
And you know what?
But it's happened elsewhere.
I've also seen a pattern where projects came in that weren't vetted, and I don't think those projects have worked out that well, now that I think about it. I think the ones that have been vetted and gone through the process have worked out a lot better. So, okay, is there any other discussion about Article 46? I think we're ready for a motion.
I'm moved to recommend no action on Article 46.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so I think that's five to zero, no action. Okay, so we only have two articles left that we have to do next time, which is going to be eighteen and, I think, thirty-two, thirty-two, I think.
Oh, yeah, eighteen.
Eighteen is the school budget, and thirty-two is the formula business article. I think we are finished with all the other articles. Great.
And will we, can we get circulated that article, that Barbara Rossky's article?
Yes. Matt, can you send that?
Yes, I'll send it.
Send it to Robin, or, or just send it out?
I can send it to the board.
Yeah, just don't reply all, you can send it to the board, that's fine. Okay, we are now ready for liaison reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. Okay, and the most recent was the Personnel Study Task Force met, met earlier today, and they are, look, they are looking at, they received the results of the survey, the employee survey that they did, which had a very good response rate, about fifty percent, which was pretty astonishing. And they started reviewing, putting together a draft proposal that involves by, possible bylaw changes, personnel bylaw, possible adjustments to policies and procedures. So they're, they're drafting, that's where they are in the process. White Pond Advisory.
And I have a question, isn't their timetable a year from now that they have to finish?
They expire, they expire, that's when the, the charge ends.
Yeah.
But they are talking about it as it being much more imminent.
I'm confused about that.
I'm confused about that, too, but I think they're kind of moving along, and they had a...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's, I think it's going to take more disc, I think the, my impression about today's discussion was that some of the things that were brought up are pretty meaty, as they said, so they, they may require more discussion and, and more, more deliberation than two weeks or a month. We'll see.
Okay.
They are going to start to meet in person, starting in two weeks at Kai's Road, so those, those will be posted, but they'll be hybrid meetings, so the, but they'll be meeting in person, and you can join either way. The White Pond Advisory Committee met on the 29th of March. One of the things, they had a, a full agenda, again, as they often do, but one of the things that they really felt strongly about and issued a statement, saying that they strongly recommend that the proposed thirteen point three five to thirteen dash forty, this is a distance that's not going to be fenced between the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and the White Pond Trails, that, that that be fenced, and they're, because they said leaving this gap invites Bruce Freeman Rail Trail passengers to visit White Pond, and the use will increase the cultural utrification, deaths of White Pond. So they, they felt very strongly about that. They, there had been some conversation with Marcia about what was possible to be fenced from the town's point of view, and what, what wasn't, and there was a gap there. West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee, I did not attend, but they will need another member, so they're looking for another member, and it's a very creative, great group. And the COA, this is another, they did not have a quorum for the last meeting. It's a nine-member committee, they're losing three members, so they're really in quorum danger as, after the, you know, the turnover. So that's, that's something that I'm going to appeal directly, please, it's a, they do great work, and it's a good group of people, and it's a monthly meeting, and I would encourage people to put in volunteer cards and get involved in that, or one of the many other committees that we've listed on the agenda. Concord Commission on Disability met, and they heard, last month, they heard a proposal from Phil Posner, and this month, they heard one from Article forty-seven, from Mark Galis. And they decided that they were taking no action on either proposal, and that they, neither of them had, had enough direct impact on, on the Commission on Disability.
No position, you mean?
No position.
Yep.
No position, right. And Natural Resources has been fairly routine business over the past several meetings, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next?
I'll go next.
Okay.
A number of us attended the Concord Business Partnership Meeting on Economic Development. They had a panel from Lexington, Burlington, and Bedford, and it was very helpful, and a lot of good questions were asked by Matt and others, and I think it, my takeaway from that is that each of these places is a very different place in terms of both how they configure and define economic development in their respective communities. Some are way ahead in terms of what they've done with their websites as a resource, and in some cases, the, the website resources far exceed maybe even the staff resources that they have on the ground to execute it, but they're making that connection with the business community. And so there was, you know, so there are both websites to, to look at, as well as, you know, some places had three or four staff, others had, but that included tourism staff and some other staff, others only, it was an N of one at this point. And they utilize their interdepartmental meetings in a different way. Some were more regulatory and code-oriented, and were working more closely with the Planning Department and the DPW. And then others were pulling in all kinds of staff departments as they reviewed building permits and new applications. So Matt can probably add much more to that, but I thought it was very helpful.
Did they talk about streamlined permitting? Or not really?
They talked about concierge service.
Yes, right, that was impressive.
Which I, I thought that that was a really nice tone to set. Basically, you know, a lot of times, it feels like in Concord, we, we set up a set of big barriers and see if you could jump over these, and then, you know, after us, there's the state, you know, and so it really gets to be quite a burden for, for, to establish a new business, or to expand, and all that. So, you know, Lexington, I thought, was a model that was a really nice model, where they, they literally just try to provide a kind of a turnkey support service. Certainly, you still want, and, and I think it's a nice balance, because in Concord, I think we still want the regulations that we have, they're important, but we don't want to make them a burden.
Right.
You know, and, and so trying to help someone get through the process would be great, and, and I, I felt like that was a great model. There are other models of, hey, go out and try to find big businesses to move into town. I mean, that's an entirely different skill set.
I'm, I'm working with the Lexington people now on the...
So you, you're a client, right?
The restaurant, the restaurant, Fiorella's in Concord.
Yeah.
Is opening a restaurant in Lexington, and I am dealing with the Lexington people about everything from...
So what does it feel like as a client?
You call, you call somebody up, and they actually help you, and they tell you what to do. We had an issue with a building permit application. I call up the woman who is the, kind of the, the, what they call the development officer, and she says, oh yeah, you just email it to me, and I'll add it to the building permit application for you. You know, and, and they have a single permit process, you just one form for all permits, and they, and when I got through with the conversation on the phone this afternoon with the business development woman, who was the woman who was here in Concord from Lexington, she said, oh, we're really very excited that this is coming to Lexington.
Yeah, I think we should just hire those people?
Well...
How many of them?
We can start with one, but, you know.
And also, I mean, another experience, which I, with, with Lincoln now, I have had considerable dealings with the Natural Resources there, and the director there said to me, you know, we have a staff of four people in Lincoln, in the Natural Resources Department, which is more than you have in the town of Concord.
That's right, we have three, right?
And they have, they have sixteen, she said, they have sixteen hundred acres of conservation land.
We only have twelve hundred.
And they have four working in the Natural Resources, and they're really very helpful.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm the liaison for Economic Vitality, and I, I'm sorry I missed that, because I was very much looking forward to actually how this functioned, and, but I wasn't able to attend.
Luminia is kind of a good excuse.
All right, sorry, Linda, back to your report.
That was worth reporting out on for all of us. The Cemetery Committee, you know, I, I've sung their praises before, they're, they continue to do good work. Right now, they're looking at some ground cover issues with, going to set up their own testing plots with, with the blessing of the, of Aaron McCloskey, the superintendent. So, you know, they're taking the initiative to do these things and carefully researching or whatever, so that's good. The department is just on the Stonewall Assessment Report, and so there was a very thoughtful conversation about how do we move forward now with addressing some of the issues that were identified in the assessment report. And, you know, everything from, you know, where can we find the funding, what are the multiple sources of funding, and talked about identifying high-impact failure as perhaps a criteria for how they dissect that assessment report. So some really good thoughtful conversation, I thought.
The...
Did they, they sold a mausoleum, I understand.
Right, they're on the second, sort of second phase of that right now, ready to move into the design phase, and we're talking about a project that is pretty substantial in cost, so they're moving forward with that. Yep. Concord Housing Authority hopes to finally close on the HUD repositioning by the end of April. That's a big, you know, they've been at this almost two years or better at this point, and so that's, it's a big step for them.
Close on the what?
HUD repositioning, meaning the change of ownership of the housing.
Yep, to local. The RFP for the house on Comev, down by Juro Park, has gone out, and they will be meeting, I think, within the next month with the one response to that, which is Habitat, as it turns out, and so, so they're hoping that will come, all come together. In the meantime, of course, before they, they brought together the two lots legally, when they thought they were previously, so now they will have to legally uncouple them.
Separate them again.
Again. So they said, you know, all of this because we turned down, they were turned down for a hundred and forty K from the town, as well as had to turn away the home funds, which was...
Let's say we're non-conforming lots, adjoining non-conforming lots, and different ownership that were then put in common ownership and cannot be, cannot be rendered asunder?
So anyway, they, they said, you know, had that money come in, we would be done by now, you know, not done, but off the ground.
That was for the seven hundred thousand dollar house, right? That, what our contribution was.
Right, at the time, yeah. Well, the, the total cost was going to be that.
Yeah.
They were asking a hundred and forty-five from...
With a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of soft costs, they probably didn't have the resources to get the... With $150,000 of soft costs, they probably didn't have the resources to get the advice about how they should own the property.
So they're, yeah, so the good news, they're plowing ahead, and they're continuing to see what they can do about this, is what I want to report there. There also, there's going to be a joint venture between ACT and Concord, Bedford, I believe it is. Anyway, there's like four or five communities that are coming together for a residential coordinator position. And the, and ACT, and the salary for that person once hired will likely either come for Concord, will be administered by either Concord or ACT.
What will that person do?
They will be one day in each of the four or five towns, and also available to all of the towns throughout the week if calls come in, working with tenants on issues that tenants have, and other programs that may benefit the...
Do these towns have a similar number of tenants that are in these programs?
It varies greatly from each of these towns, but it made sense in terms of no one town really can...
Afford to have a whole person.
Right, exactly.
No one wants to work at this eight hours a week.
And, right. And DHCD has approved this regional sort of effort for this particular position. Planning Board, we've already heard, the main activity there was voting on all the articles that we've already heard a report out on. I would also say that there was a continuation of the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan that's going to result in five new houses on Sunnyside Lane. And so that seems to be...
Beyond what's already being built there?
Well, this is, it was a continuation of the public hearing for this, for this new definitive subdivision plan.
Yeah, wow. I mean, because they've already kind of, they've put, I think, three houses on the end of that street down near the pond.
Yeah, so in addition to that.
And then there's, I wonder where they're putting them?
And...
I mean, it all seemed like wetlands to me, but...
And it's also, it also includes road improvements that will be part of this.
Yeah, wow.
So it's...
Big change down there.
Yeah, it's, surprise to some people. And then the Historic Districts Commission had an interesting conversation about the scenic roads general bylaw. In the end, they decided that in terms of its highlighting the historic placemaking aspect of the town, and that they supported the spirit of it, they felt that it had potential jurisdiction complications for them in terms of what their role is in reviewing applications that come to them. So they did not want to take a definitive position on it. So I just, it just had to do with their charge and the nature of the applications that come to them. And I think that's the main things I'll report at this point. I only went back a week. I didn't go...
You did all that in one week?
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, sorry.
I neglected one, one report. I wasn't able to go to Economic Vitality Committee last week, but I did learn that they have a vacancy, so they're looking for a member.
Oh, okay. Great. You might have that already? No?
No.
Okay, we'll add that. Okay, thanks. All right, who's next? Henry or Matt?
So I can go. So really, only two things I want to highlight. First, the Recreation Commission has been going through a process because the Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball had requested originally to put up a fence in the middle of Rideout Park to define the edge of the field number two, the middle field. And then the Recreation Commission held a public meeting. There was a lot of public feedback at that. And then subsequently, the Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball withdrew that particular part of the request, and instead came back with the idea of the lining, and then the other elements, which had great support, which were the backstops on the fields and this batting cage carpet. So that's where we stand right now. But one thing I should note is that they have said that, you know, based upon their experience in this season, that they may come back next season with, you know, another request.
I thought that was a good outcome, however.
I thought that the process, by the way, worked out much better than it might have. In other words, because there was a, there was a process in 2008 that wasn't very pleasant. And then there was the additions to Rideout Field that were done, I think, around 2016, and that worked out very well, a very broadly, you know, positive process. And ended up with this really nice field right at the beginning, at the front, with the fence and everything, and it doesn't intrude upon the park. But then this time, with that idea of the fence in the middle of the park, there was certainly resistance. And so I think that the Concord Carlisle Youth Baseball was flexible, and I think that we came up with a good result for now. So then the other actually big deal is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee held a meeting where they discussed the short-term options for Junction Park, and they came to agreement on the option that they're going to pursue. So that is now sort of the working plan that they're going to try to get implemented.
What is that option?
Well, the idea was to kind of create more of a, almost like an archway or something, to kind of create a sense of entering the park, and then signs that were much less sort of about prohibition than about sort of respect, and that, about the use of kind of planters to define the boundaries, but not to create an obstacle course. And so their hope is that it will sort of, it will promote the right kind of behaviors on the parts of the people in the park, but, you know, it's yet to be seen. It's a theory, but it's the working theory that the committee came up with, and that they hope to get implemented for the short term.
So are they going to write that down and report to us?
Yes, they're going to come with their report. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, this is what they're sort of now going to do, is write all this up.
And then, so they'll probably be coming to the Select Board before June 30th, or...
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Great.
So, yeah, and then I attended other meetings, but I think most of them, you know, like the Middle School Building Committee, things are moving along. There was a request from Mary Hartman that I received, that I passed along to the Middle School Building Committee, which was to remind us that in the charge, it says that the Middle School Building Committee shall report to us and to the school committee on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
You know, to send us a report. So we're having another meeting this Thursday, so hopefully that will get discussed there.
Right.
I mean, I do believe, just to be clear, that we have gotten really good communication. I mean, it's not just been on that specific interval, but now that we're moving into the construction phase, it's probably good to formalize that.
Yep. That's great. Thanks. Thanks, Mary.
Yeah. And then Municipal Light Board, both, they voted, you know, as you saw, so...
Okay. All right, Henry.
I think it's past everybody's bedtime.
Yeah.
The Civil War Monument Committee met at the monument today at 3:00 with the vendors for the restoration work and for the bronze casting work for the plaque. So they're getting well along with that project. And with regard to Celebrations Committee, it was kind of interesting, where we talked about the Ukraine situation, and the, kind of the neutrality of the independent battery when they came to us last week on that subject. But subsequent to that, they in fact did invite, the battery did invite this, I think it's in Braintree, the group of Ukrainian, Ukrainian-American veterans to attend their battery lunch at the Misketiket Club, which is the annual event that, I don't know, the board usually get, got invited to that over the years. But anyway, it turned out that in spite of that effort, they were otherwise engaged for that, for that, for that day, for Patriots' Day. So, but with regard to the proclamation we signed today, I will be going back to the Celebrations Committee and remove any doubt as to what the views of the town are on that issue, and see if that has any impact on what we see in the parade. On my birthday, by the way, Patriots' Day is on my birthday this year.
Wow.
And...
Town meeting's on mine.
Well, I think I'd rather have a parade than a town meeting. But that's, you know, talk to your parents about that.
Yeah.
And, oh, and I am going, I've been asked to read the town's proclamation on Arbor Day.
Okay, great.
With the, with the garden club. And I am trying to find also a student to read something that was always part of Arbor Day when I was a kid, which is, you know, the poet after whom an interchange was on the New York, on the Jersey Turnpike was named? Who? Joyce Kilmer.
Yes, trees.
Trees. And poems were made by fools like me, but only God can make a tree. So I'm hoping to get some innocent kid to recite that poem on Arbor Day.
Great.
So...
I have a question on the Civil War cast force. I think we have them scheduled to come in at our next meeting.
Is it? I thought they were coming back after town meeting.
Well, that might be even better. Because we're starting to get busy.
I think that we originally talked about extending their tenure for something like 60 days, but that hit us right in the preparation for town meeting period. And so I think we agreed that they would come at a, an early meeting after town meeting.
Okay. I have it down for April 25th, but I'd rather move it. I will get in touch with them. Move to May. Okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay, and...
There's always more to say, but it's, you know, it's...
It's late.
You old folks, you know, need your rest.
All right. I'll be pretty brief. So the school committee, there is a new business manager starting. His name is Robert Conry. He comes to us with a lot of experience from the Berlin, most recently from the Berlin-Bolston Regional School District. There was a very lengthy presentation from the DEI Director, Andrew Niamecki, and he gave step one out of four. Step one was the assessment for DEI. That is now complete. And they're going to start step two, which is to develop a strategic plan to do more with DEI. There were a number of parents who objected, especially the Medco parents, stating there was just a lot of talk and no action, that we need more resources, more transparency. They wanted a seat on the school committee. There was quite a lot of debate from the Medco parents and others. So by law, they cannot be on the school committee unless they're resident of either Concord or Carlisle. But they, I think, are going to be on the, well, definitely on the Strategic Plan Committee for the DEI. And I think there's possibly another committee that they're going to, or they're going to be maybe associate members, where they come to the meetings but don't vote.
Is that for DEI, their associates, or for the strategic school committee?
The strategic plan is for the DEI, but it's still a work in progress. It's still being discussed. So I'm not sure what the latest iteration is.
You're saying associate Linda for school committee?
Yeah, that's a possibility. Also, there was quite a controversy about replacing the Alcott boiler. This has been on the capital plan for a long time, but several citizens commented that they should wait a year, reevaluate, and purchase a green alternative boiler. So the school committee was kind of divided. They might be taking a look at that. That's another work in progress.
That's a new school, too.
Really?
Relatively.
Relatively.
Yeah.
Fifteen, over fifteen years.
Fifteen, yeah. It feels new, but...
Twenty.
Yeah. So the MMA fiscal policy, I'm a member of that, and we had a really interesting meeting with Legislative Director Jackie Lavender Byrd and David Carr of our Tax Fairness Committee, and also present were Rich Scanlon and Carolyn D. from the Assessors' Office. And David Carr's group, the Tax Fairness Group, will be coming to our next meeting to talk about that and next steps in terms of tax fairness in Concord, and also what's going on around the state. Fiber Committee, Fiber Broadband is finishing their draft report, and there is a forum on April 14th here in the Town Hall, and by Zoom at 7:00. And one of the controversial recommendations is going to be to get rid of what they call the PLOF, which is Payment in Low of Franchise. So that will be discussed at the forum. Basically, what that is right now is, if you're a Comcast customer, you, part of your bill, like $5 or $10 of your bill goes toward the MMN PEG access. And if instead you're a customer of the town fiber, they're asking the town fiber group to give a contribution, which is kind of like a payment in lieu of taxes. They're calling it Payment in Low of Franchise. And it's $20,000, which is not a lot of money, but it's, there's several different opinions about that, so we'll be hearing about that.
Did you say $20,000 is not a lot of money?
The budget for Minuteman Media is, I think, around 400.
Right. And the budget for the fiber is way more than that. So relatively speaking, I guess. And then finally, the REC, the Regional Communications Center, has started meeting again between ACT and Concord. They are now meeting by Zoom, which is great. And the consultant is trying to move very quickly, but Kerry was present and asked several really excellent questions to, on due diligence, and sort of looking at the whole timeframe. And I think this will probably be a big subject coming up on a future Select Board agenda this spring or summer. So that's it for my report.
Can I just ask, Robert Conry, what's his title?
Whatever Jared was.
So Assistant Superintendent?
Yeah.
He came in with that title?
Well, I'm not sure if it's a business manager or assistant superintendent.
Yeah, no, I don't know. I just know.
It's probably Assistant Superintendent for Operations and...
For what?
And Finance. Assistant Superintendent for Operations and Finance.
Of what?
Of the schools.
Of the schools.
Thank you.
Okay.
One other thing I might mention, it's, you probably heard on the news that they're closing down Cedar Junction.
Yeah, yeah.
Department of Corrections, and they're, because of the lack of business, they have only about 500 and some odd inmates there, and they say they're going to be redistributing to other institutions. My guess is that we might, that might mean we might get 100 or two of those people in at MCI Concord. And it's something that we might want to be in touch with the Department of Corrections in order to talk about some of the public safety issues and all that stuff that arise from increasing the population at this, at MCI Concord, just thinking ahead.
Henry, oh, sorry. Was that, isn't that a maximum security?
Yes.
Yeah. So the article that I saw mentioned relocating those inmates to Souza Baranowski in Shirley, because it is, it is a maximum security prison. So I wouldn't expect that they would be, that any would be coming here. But we do have a community forum with the superintendent over at... But we do have a community forum with the superintendent over at MCI Concord, semi-annual or quarterly, I'm not sure, but we certainly could follow up with her before that. But if, if we don't, if our paths don't cross before that, we certainly would bring that up with her.
That process, they say, was going to be.
A couple of years.
Over a couple of years.
Yeah.
And so isn't that a relatively small institution, Souza Baranowski?
Well, they probably have, have a similar situation over there where, where their census is probably lower than what it's been in the, in the past, as is ours.
What about, yeah, what about MCI Concord? Are we at capacity or?
No.
No. MCI Concord, I think I reported maybe a month ago or so, there are about 500 inmates there and at its height in the, in the late 80s, early 90s, I think there were 1,100 or 1,200. So it's, it's very low.
Wow. But it, that was overcrowded, too.
So.
All right. We're getting off topic. Okay. So we're ready for committee nominations.
There are no nominations this week.
Appointments.
Move to appoint Mark W. Giddings of 474 Barrett's Mill Road to the Planning Board with the term starting January 1st, 2022, and ending May 31st, 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Miscellaneous, Linda?
So Mark is also the representative to the Hanscom Field Committee. But, you know, that's sort of not, you know, that's sort of an external appointment. So I just, you know, just make everyone aware.
Thanks for pointing that out.
And he, and he offered to, you know, step down from that if the Select Board felt it was necessary, but I, I think it's more of an external.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out. So miscellaneous correspondence, as I said, we received many, many letters in support of Article 25. And that was the only topic that came up this week on miscellaneous correspondence. And we are ready for public comment. Okay, Mary.
Hi, thank you. Mary Hartman, 16 Concord Green, member of the Finance Committee, speaking for myself. I wanted to let you know that I did go to the Economic Vitality Committee meeting that was held the same day as many of us attended the Concord Business Partnership. And most of that meeting was taken up by a presentation by the staff from Planning and Land Management that was showing slides that were supposed to be, that were intended for people to start business in Concord. And I was struck by the difference in the tone of what I heard from the people in the morning at the Concord Business Partnership and the tone of our present, the presentation that we were giving to businesses. And it was kind of like what Matt was saying. It really did sound like, here are the, here are all the obstacles you need to go through in order to start a business in, in Concord. So we have some work to do as far as making ourselves truly a welcoming community as opposed to simply, I mean, I don't think we want to relax our requirements at all, but I think we want to help people. So I'm just pretty much echoing what you've already said, but I wanted to let you know that that's what happened at the Economic Vitality Committee and I think we have, we have work to do. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mary, and we hope you'll be very involved in that effort. We look forward to you joining us next month.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, other public comment. Seeing none, we're ready for motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody have a great night.
What's left of it?